Good evening and welcome to the May 18, 2015 Long Meadow Select Board Meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll start with announcements. Any Select Board Members have any announcements? Steven?
I would just announce, well, it's in the Town Manager's Report, but it has been announced on the local media that a prescription drug drop box has been installed in the lobby of our Police Department. In years past, the Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, would sponsor drug take-back days and we'd get, you know, a couple hundred pounds of prescription drugs and unneeded medicines and dispose of them properly. Those programs aren't being funded anymore, so CVS sponsored a program by which municipalities can get these drop boxes that are securely installed. And so, our Police Department lobby is open 24/7, so people can come in and I don't know if they should take them out of the bottles or keep them in, but they can just certainly dispose of a bag of medication. I think we don't want sharps or liquids, but certainly pills and other non-liquid forms of medication are acceptable.
What would they do with the sharps and liquids? Do you know at this point?
There's a sharps disposal program that we run through our trash hauler.
You can get a separate container.
And they can contact our trash hauler, which is Republic up until July 1st, and then it's Waste Management, and they'll deliver something to people's homes.
I think our Board of Health also has a supply, you know, of sharps containers that people can get for their homes if they have a need for them.
To the Council on Aging.
Also to the Council on Aging.
Okay. Go ahead.
The citizens of the year informs us.
Okay. Any more announcements? Any resident comments tonight?
I had something.
Go ahead.
I'm not new to this format. Do I just come up here?
Yes, sir. Come on up here and state your name and address, please.
Sure. Name's Patrick Carnahan.
Oh, wait till you get the mic, so the TV can, audience can hear you.
Patrick Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road. This is about the trees that have been posted in my neighborhood and other neighborhoods in town. A few weeks ago, some signs appeared on the trees posting that there was a hearing on May 15th, at the DPW, or May 14th at the DPW regarding the removal of trees. So, I was a little surprised, so were other residents in the neighborhood. I live in the Kiwi Track, and I hired an arborist to come in and take a look at the trees. The arborist said the trees were in good shape. They were actually in very good shape. A little overpruned, but quite good shape, 125 to 150 years old. And I assumed that it was going to be the sidewalk removal is why the trees were going to come down. So, I created a petition in the neighborhood, and I do have copies of the signature of that petition. I'm going to give those to you folks before I leave. That the petition requested that the town consider other alternative methods other than removing the trees for the sidewalks. I attended the meeting, as did probably 30 other Long Meadow residents that was held at 5:30 at the DPW facility where we discussed the tree removals. DPW Director Mike Rabel advised that the trees would not be removed right now, that the matter would be sent to the Selectmen for further thought and comment, because the way that Chapter 87 with Massachusetts law regarding the removal and maintenance of shade trees and street trees is that if the trees are posted and there's a public hearing and written objection is made to the removal of the trees, and these are non-hazard trees, then the matter is removed from immediacy and then brought to another body for consideration. I'm assuming that would be the Selectmen and the Selectwoman who would decide the future of the trees. So, I ask that, I'm assuming public notice will be given on the hearing and the content of the hearing. I know there's a number of residents in my neighborhood, the Kiwi Track, that would like to attend the public hearing regarding the trees. The trees are an integral part of the Kiwi Track. The trees predate the houses. The houses were made around the trees. The sidewalk, while there is some buckling, do not probably need to be, the trees do not need to be removed for the sidewalks. The sidewalks are panel sidewalks in town, five-foot lengths. Those panels are made specifically so that sections that are misplaced or that are trip hazards can be removed, slightly regraded, and then reestablished. That's the standard practice for communities outside of the Boston area, Cambridge, Brookline, Boston itself. A number of communities there have pretty strict guidelines on trees, and they also, they would recommend not the removal of a good, healthy, you know, 100-year-old or older tree just for the sidewalk. So, I know that you've got a lot of people behind me, so I have copies of the petitions. Do I give those to you just to make you aware of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And I also just copied you in a Chapter 87 of the Massachusetts laws regulating trees and shade trees in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Mr. Steven?
Excuse me?
No, I was passing it down to Steven.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you for coming in, sir. Resident comments?
My name is Kurt Friedman, 24 Ridge Road. As a follow-up to the whole Article 23 issue of last week, and certainly with the dry spell we've had, we've had hardly rained in last month, our present water and sewer policy forbids residential customers from utilizing irrigation water meters while allowing commercial customers to utilize such meters is an obvious form of undue rate discrimination. Collectively, homeowners are charged out some $585,000 a year based on present rates. To charge our community nearly $600,000 a year for a service not rendered cannot be considered, in my mind, just and equitable. Simple question to each of our Selectmen and Water and Sewer Commissioners. Would you support an irrigation water meter policy for residential customers? And Mr. Grant, if you could start.
No interaction at this point.
Okay. Just a question, yeah, to the board.
Yeah, you're just addressing the board that we don't have interaction, Kurt.
Yes. So, just a question, if the Selectmen would want to answer that, would you support an irrigation water meter policy for residential customers?
As I say, there's no interaction at this point. I would suggest that you condense it down to writing and send it on in to the Town Manager to Corlison.
Thank you. I will do so. Okay.
Thank you, Kurt.
Mr. Friedman? Thank you very much.
Is there any other visitor? Resident comments?
You're welcome. Oh, go ahead, sir.
Jim Russell, 108 Bel Air Drive, Long Meadow, Chairman of the Park Board. Tonight, the Select Board is going to interview two candidates whose term on Parks and Recreation is expiring next month. I have watched both of these gentlemen, Dave Horowitz and Jim Jones, over the last three years. They add such a dimension to Parks and Recreation. Their attendance is excellent. Their interaction with the other board members is great. But this doesn't end with their serving on Parks and Recreation. Dave Horowitz is an engineer. He has offered his expertise regarding the DPW. He also is very involved with the sports councils in Long Meadow, as well as the field conditions and how they are addressed. Mr. Jones serves with distinction on the CPC Committee, was one of the spearheads in carrying the vote that we secured money to build the 12 new tennis courts. He's also a great volunteer in the town, serving meals on wheels with St. Mary's Church, and every time I look up, he's doing something else. These two gentlemen show the true meaning of volunteerism, and there was no question in their minds when I asked them if they would consider reapplying for another three-year term on the park board. So, I ask four gentlemen and lady, please vote Horowitz and Jones. What a combination. Thank you.
Thank you.
Years ago, there was a discussion about naming rights for different things in the town. As I remember, it was decided that that would be up to the Select Board to make a decision on that. I ask for your consideration for the new Quinn truck that's coming in to have a little sticker or painting referring to as the Chief Madison in honor of his years of service and the way he tried so, so hard to get it for every year. And now, he's going to have a truck, and he's not going to be our chief. So, just as a remembrance, if there's a question of cost, I'll throw in some money for it. And if Marie, who was very, very responsible for us having that eventually, would take care of any collection that has to come in, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard.
Any more resident comments?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Michelle Van Scowen, 573 Wolf Swamp Road. In the last couple of weeks, Kinder Morgan has come in to Wolf Swamp Road and beyond and installed a number of safety markers, both along rights of way, but also in residents' lawns, along property lines, and more. We are concerned that while safety is important, that this is overkill visually and is probably not the most necessary for insured safety. There are a number of alternatives, such as flat markers and things for people's lawns. We are concerned that as far as safety goes, we don't get the required safety mailings from Kinder Morgan, and that we suspect that the timing of the installation of these markers may have more to do for Kinder Morgan's interest in constructing, using a two-acre site to build a metering station near Long Meadow Country Club, and that perhaps these markers are intended to pacify or impress regulators rather than being a sudden, you know, sudden burning need for safety. We ask for your consideration in helping residents to protect their property values and the value of the neighborhood. We've had a number of comments that the neighborhood is looking pretty awful if you drive up and down Wolf Swamp. They're four foot tall, look like lit cigarettes. So, thank you for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. And just for adoration, that issue is on the agenda tonight, and there'll be a briefing from the firm, and I believe we have a representative from the government here that'll be addressing that issue, too.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I encourage you to stay and listen.
We will. Okay. Thank you very much.
Is there any other resident comments? Okay. Steven, you had said.
Yeah, I think we can, or if you want to do the pipeline question first, it's up to you.
Yeah, the pipeline question may get more involved.
Yeah, okay.
Why don't we proceed? So, I'd like to bring up, I'm going to bring up the groups of people this time, since we have so many people in different committees. And I'd like to start with the Parks and Recreation Commission, Dave Horowitz and James Jones.
Please, with your name and name of the committee that you're applying for.
It's called a theatrical pause, isn't it, while they sign in?
I just hope you can read it.
Well, we'll help. And you've already had a pretty good introduction. I think we know why both of you are here, and we had you interviewed, so the people are aware. We interviewed you guys out of sequence about three or four months ago, and we had to bring you back in because of the bylaw that states that it's over 28 days, you must come back in, so.
Like Yogi Berra said, deja vu all over again.
Deja vu all over again. So, I think we'll ask, I don't need to hear another statement unless somebody else would like to hear an opening statement from this gentleman, or do I move into questioning?
Just grill them.
Just grill them, okay. You can take off, Mr. Santino.
First of all, thank you for reapplying. I've been to more than a few of your meetings and see the interaction that you guys have as a board, and I know it's very active and involved. And I don't know if we asked this question six weeks ago, whatever it was. If you guys are reappointed, what are you going to try to do over the next three years of your term? Or what would you like to see happen?
Sure. Dave Horowitz, 18 Cirque Road, Vice Chair of the Park and Rec Commission. As I mentioned a few weeks back, the next three years would just be increasing efficiencies that we talked about when I first applied to be on this board. I think we've made tremendous progress, especially with the youth organizations, in sharing the resources that we have. And we've got some challenges coming up. Mr. Russell was kind enough to mention the DPW. There will be some space constraints that we've got to deal with, but we can do that. We've got resources. We just have to take advantage of efficiencies to get the most out of those resources. We've got many examples that we could give you to show you what we've done in the past three years, and hope to do more in the next three years.
Jim Jones, 120 Bel Air. As I said before, apparently Long Meadow is going to be changing in the next three, four, or five years, and we have to be prepared for it. We have to, you know, have all our ducks in a row to make sure we're going to progress with the children in the community, that they all have the proper facilities to practice and play and so on and so forth, so they don't have to go to various other communities to play their games. So, I think we have a big job ahead of us the next couple of years to have our planning in, you know, straight.
Anyone else?
Again, I also thank you for applying. I have two issues that are, they're not so much in the area of questions, but they are in terms of comments. I think one of the bigger concerns that we hear from the Select Board is the issue of Bliss Park and dogs using Bliss Park, and I guess that leads right into the dog park, which I've been talking to Mr. Russell about for a long time, and we hear all the issues. But I guess my question would be, is there any prospects on the horizon of that actually happening in the town of Long Meadow over the next, some period of time?
We've discussed it at meetings, off and on, for the past number of years. Mr. Russell, I think, brings it up every so often. But to be honest, I don't think we've set anything down in stone yet, you know, if we're going to have one at all. Apparently, East Long Meadow has a terrific dog park, and that's where he takes his dog. But I don't think anything's on our agenda, in the near future, anyway.
I echo that sentiment. I mean, it's definitely quote-unquote "on our agenda," and we speak about it relatively frequently. I think if Mr. Russell were up here, he'd point out that I think 400 of us have licenses to code East Long Meadow. It's a good resource to have. It's relatively local. And as I said earlier, with the limited amount of space we have, we want to get as much out of these resources as we can, and we haven't, at least at this point, prioritized that to get going.
Anybody else?
Mr. Golat, you mentioned two items. The dog park was one.
No, that was fine. That's enough.
One of the things that I've heard from various people, you know, who are in youth organizations is the conditions of fields. Is that something that you all have looked at? And if you could just tell us sort of what your thoughts are behind that?
We look at it almost every meeting. We have coaches come to the meetings. In fact, we had the soccer coach, or cheer lady, the last meeting, Mary Pat.
Yep.
And that's a very big concern of ours. I think one of the fields was Wolf Swamp with the destruction of all the grass and so on for the big storm we had and so on. And I think David came up with an idea of Turner Field, some ground between the ball fields.
Yep.
That we can use for soccer and maybe even just practice. But I think field management is going to be a big item in the next couple of years to, you know, manage what we have, you know, so everybody gets a chance at it instead of, you know, 400 children over here and only two over here. We just want to make sure everybody gets a fair shake on the practice fields and so on.
And I think to echo that sentiment, back to resources and back to limited resources, you know, the DPW is taxed, they have a lot to do, and I think from a process perspective, I think we would all benefit from streamlining that effort. The other thing I want to point out is we've got tremendous community advocates. We've got folks volunteering all the time to help us with those fields, and that's tremendous. But we want to do that in the auspices of things that Mike Rabel or a successor will be able to stand behind and help. We don't want people just doing it themselves. We want to do it in a planned way. So, again, it comes back to efficiency and getting the most out of the DPW hours that we can get to keep those fields as good as they possibly can. Another note, quickly. This was tremendously challenging winter, and we got off to a slow start with the baseball diamonds and the soccer fields. But they've come along, and if you take a ride this weekend, I'm sure you're going to see fields aplenty and fields full over the Memorial Day weekend.
I think, I think we had 11 warrants on the town meeting this past week, and most of them were DPW propositions. So, you know, we're going to tax DPW on a lot of projects over here, and what are we going to have left over for our fields and so on? So, that's going to be a big, big problem.
I mean, one of the things I've noticed, because I coach youth soccer, sometimes the grass is just four or five inches high. I mean, have you had discussions with DPW about that?
Some of the little plants get lost in the grass. I think we found a couple. I haven't, I don't think we've really had.
No. And as Chairman Russell mentioned, I spend a lot of time on the fields. I don't want to be seen as the squeaky wheel for DPW. I want to work collaboratively with them. I think they do a great job with the resources they have. But I hear things like that regularly, and I got to put my eyes to it and see if there's a better sequence. It's going to happen. We're going to, there's going to be limited resources, and we're going to do the best we can with what we have.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you. We'll be making the decision at our next meeting, which is on June 1st. Next, could we have the Audit Committee come up, please? Are the people requesting positions on audit?
I'm Ernest Welker, 243 Burbank Road.
Peter Landon, 5 Meadowbrook Road.
And I would remind you, she would like you to sign in if you could, so she's got that. But you can, we can start the talk if we are while you're signing in. Any, would you like introduction? We know you well. I think everybody knows you well.
Thank you. I don't know that everybody does, but.
Well, I could say there's a large statement I just jumped on. Any board members have any questions?
My question is, for both of you, we've got a new auditor coming to town.
Yeah.
This year.
New gunsmith.
Is good, bad, indifferent? How's that going to impact the work of your committee?
Well, it won't. It depends, put it that way. We had a smooth sailing with Scanlon Associates for so many years, and so there will be some give and take to get back to understand the thing. But it's pretty clear-cut what kind of things we do and what we ask for, and then it's up to the auditor to go about and do his usual things, which are required by law. And then, we work out on some of the other matters that are of interest to us, that we want him to look into. So, there will be some more on that, probably, and we'll find our way.
Thanks. Mr. Landon, you've been a champion, I guess, of policies, regulations. There's something coming before us a little bit later that I'd just like to get your opinion on. We've had in town the merger of two banks, Hampton Bank and Berkshire Bank, and under the auspices of Berkshire Bank, Berkshire is not DIF-funded, and we're having some concerns. What would be your recommendation? Does the town, based on your having helped write the policy, does the town move their funds out of Berkshire Bank now that they're no longer insured to the fullest extent of our deposits?
Can I get back to you on that? This is the Audit Committee. This is not the Finance Committee.
No, no. But it was, I thought the Audit Committee really had something. No?
We have an interest in it, for sure.
Okay. Fine. I'll pass.
Any other questions?
Have you all found, or issues relating to how the School Department handles money?
Who handles money?
The School Department.
Yeah. Yes, we have.
Okay. Because one of the things that happened recently is my daughter's going on a school field trip, and everybody was supposed to bring her $49 in cash.
Yeah.
And I was just wondering, have you guys looked at that, sort of the handling of large amounts of cash like that?
Yes, it's definitely a problem in a lot of areas to do a good job of controlling these things would be very, very expensive, and it's very, very hard to do. And it is a big concern, and there are some aspects to, there have been policies that committee, Audit Committee has kind of, through the auditor and through Paul, Finance Director, Pesterzic, to have some policies put in place. And then, the other aspect of it is, though, is that even if policies are there, policies and procedures, they have to actually be implemented. And sometimes that gets lost in the shuffle. Somebody who's critical to a certain role in that moves on, and nobody is aware enough to pick up, to see that. And so, it is, it is a concern, and we have been trying to emphasize through Mr. Pesterzic that the School Department has a responsibility, as much as anybody else does, to have the proper procedures and to indeed implement them.
May I respond, Mr. Golat, with this time? Get my head together on that issue. Deposit Insurance Bureau is a state level, the DIF, I believe, and it's a bootstrap on federal deposit insurance, and I think. And I think the real security in it might be in the policy that was drafted and I think approved would be that you get, that they get full collateral on any deposits in the Berkshire Bank. So it becomes federal deposit. Everything over that would be secured by a side pledge of the assets of the bank. And it's not uncommon with cities and towns, so it's a good question.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Paul.
I'm going to ask the same question as the Park Board. Over the next three years, what do you see the challenges for your committee? And I know, Pete, you've been off it for maybe a couple of years or so, but you were on there originally. Because we do have a new auditor, but as we get those audit reports from the Audit Committee on a quarterly basis, everything seems to be, things that are cited that need improvement, we seem to be handling pretty well and addressing them. But what do you see from the committee's standpoint of the things that we should be looking at over the next few years?
Well, one of the things that we're excited about, actually, is that we're going to, begin implementing through the Finance Department and through the new auditor. You might remember when we asked to have an extra $2,500 for this audit, to be able working on a CAFR, which is a Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Because I'm sure you realize, when you look at the audit, the financial statements, they're very, very hard to draw anything from. So the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report would expand to have more data that is instructive and informational, so that you might have 10 years of historic data, then you have current data, and then maybe some projections. And that might be any number of data items, so that for people interested enough, we can get a better grasp on trends and projections. So that's, we consider that to be very important, because over the years that I've been on the committee since it was formed, it's always been, there's always been a struggle within the committee, how can we do more to make this more informative? And it's a hard thing to do. And this GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, has come up with this Comprehensive Annual Financial Review for Audit Committees, which is an avenue for doing that. So we appreciate, by the way, that we got the $2,500 to begin this. It's a three-year project from our standpoint. We look to have it done in three years without having huge expenses associated with outside services.
Okay, thank you.
And one of the audiences of all that increased transparency that Ernie's talking about is the bond rating agencies. I think with the financial pressures we know the town has ahead of it, it's really important to maintain that bond rate, existing bond rating ages, rating, excuse me.
Any other questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Board of Assessor.
No one want to join me. I'm at a disadvantage.
Only one today.
Everyone comes up with a pair and I'm alone. Lawrence Rubin, Eddie King, Philip, Long Meadow.
And Lawrence, you're incumbent.
Yep.
Any questions for Lawrence?
Great.
Paul's got one.
I've got one for you.
Oh, great, thank you.
Over the last few years, I know there's been challenges in getting quorums and I see, we see the minutes and we see that that's not an issue any longer.
Right.
I'm just going to say the same thing. You know, we go through the tri-annual evaluation. What do you see that's going to be the upcoming issue for the Audit Committee? I mean, for the assessors?
Well, I know, you know, right now that we're up against, I think, the last Select Board meeting, the presentation was made that we're coming up against that ceiling. And I think just trying to find an equitable distribution of values and, you know, not going over that ceiling or trying to stay below it and working out that way.
Okay. I can ask one more. Sure. In the past, and it was from the Assessors' Report that we had back a few months, home values have started to have come down. I think it was stated $26,000, $24,000 on the average home in Long Meadow. Are we seeing an increase in any of that in abatements?
Well, I can't speak for previous years on the number of abatements. I just, you know, I was filling out a position, so I've only been on the board for the last six months. So I don't know comparison. I think we had this year mid-30s in abatements that came in. And I don't have a comparison of what happened in the previous years as a level of abatement, so.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board of Health?
Okay, I can write my name and speak at the same time. Baudevsky, 134 Tanglewood Drive in Long Meadow. And I am an incumbent.
And you're an incumbent. And I want to have some questions. Go ahead.
I guess I was going to ask, the Board of Health has a lot of responsibilities. And one of the things that we have going in potentially are restaurants and that kind of thing. Do you folks focus primarily on, well called, health issues related to, you know, communicable diseases, I guess? Or more toward the...
We run, you know, I've spoken before, this committee before, we run the gamut from vaccine, town vaccination, to e-cigarette issues, to looking at restaurants and food services, whether it's at Long Meadow Days or whether it's new restaurants and the grease traps they put in. The topics that we address are wide and varied. And we educate ourselves when we need to, or we are, due to our experience as, you know, I'm a physician in emergency medicine, we have things that I'm knowledgeable about that we all contribute. The committee's pretty active and pretty successful in doing that.
One of the things that, it's been in the news the last couple of days, is a couple of towns north of Bus Hamerst, I think in South Hadley, increased their e-cigarette purchase age in their town. Is anything like that under discussion in Long Meadow?
No, we're not looking at to change that. You know, we recently implemented the no smoking in the public vehicles and public property. And we've addressed smoking issues for the restaurant establishments and pets in the restaurant establishments and those sort of things. But nothing that I'm aware of right now on the agenda. Fluoride will be coming back, though we're going to be probably decreasing that amount a little bit.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did notice there was an article just recently, they said with all the fluoride that's in products, I guess nationwide, they're calling for it to be reduced a little bit in the water systems?
Yeah, that was just brought to our attention. The level has been brought down a little bit. So we do have a meeting coming up. I'm sure that'll be on the agenda.
Okay. Any other questions?
What role, if any, do you see the Board of Health in addressing the opioid crisis that we're dealing with right now?
It's good that we have the drug boxes put into the police station in order to get rid of the spent pharmaceuticals that folks have at home. We're not really doing anything active otherwise in regulating what the pharmacies can sell or how they do it. At least nothing that's come before us at this point. There's the pharmaceutical marijuana issue, and that's been addressed at the town with regards to zoning for that sort of thing. But nothing that's yet come before our board.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Cable Advisory, come in. And, yeah, come on up, guys. Can one of you drag one more chair up there, please? There you go. Yeah, we've only got, we've got another chair, so we're going to have to get one more chair there. And everybody is an incumbent. And during the process, if we could fill out the things so that the Recording Secretary has your name and address. And we'll start with, any Board questions?
I'll let the other one start. They already know my question, because I ask it every time.
Yeah.
So you want to answer the question before I ask it, Dave? Or you want me to ask the question pro forma anyway, which is the connection between LCTV and our Cable Advisory Committee? And if there's any concerns of any of you about that overlap?
I'm glad to answer your question.
Go ahead.
I'm Don Holland, 43 Silverbridge Road in town. There are a lot of technologically savvy people on the Cable Advisory Committee, and those same people have an interest in LCTV. But the Boards are not exactly the same. A couple of people in particular, Dave Bartlett used to work at Channel 57, Norm Michaels worked in production at Channel 57, and they gave us a leg up on the Cable Advisory Committee. In terms of dealing with Comcast, for those of you who don't know, LCTV was awarded the first HD channel for a PEG station, for a access television station, 809. Comcast have not done that before on any of its, on any of its cable access television stations. And that's due in part to Dave, the way he set up the, the way he set up the studio, and to the knowledge that Dr. Wolman, Stephen Wolman, that brings to the committee. I think the different components in the committee went a long way into pressuring Comcast into granting the HD license. We found out that there was an FCC ruling during an early merger with Universal that said that Comcast could not denigrate PEG stations, Community Access Television stations. And basically, we use that to say, we're ready to send HD signals. You can't denigrate our signals. We therefore have to put on HD channel. Comcast was in the midst of another merger, and they didn't want to have a letter that we were threatening to send that might cause problems with the FCC. And so they awarded Channel 809. And so a lot of what you see on LCTV helps out the Cable Advisory. One of the things that happens in Cable Advisory is we protect the town, mainly the elderly. A lot of people, well, this is an affluent town, there are a lot of people on fixed incomes that can only afford basic television. And it's like 14% or lower. And basic's going to be done with in the next couple of years. And they're going to, they want to, Comcast wants to phase that out. And what happens if they phase that out? What happens to the elderly that only want to pay a small amount each month? That's one of the things that we do. It's a fun committee to be on, and a lot of it, I think, is due to the knowledge that comes from Dave Bartlett and the people that are technologically savvy.
Anyone else? Alan?
So I think we had an interview last year where we had an interesting discussion about the future of cable and some of the stuff that I've been reading, that the cable companies are switching from becoming cable TV providers to internet providers. And, you know, people, there's the unbundling of cable channels and all of that. How do these, how does this long-term trend affect what you all are doing?
I ultimately see us being a low-power broadcaster. And because by that time, we'll lose what support we have from Comcast. Now, I haven't thought out how we'll be financially supported when that happens, but I think we provide a service important enough to the citizens of this town to, if I may be kind of ignorant, figure out a way. I'd like to think that. I really think our service is extremely important and necessary.
And so when you say low-power broadcast, you mean like a TV signal?
Correct. Off-air. Yeah. To be used by the current digital television technology, off-air technology. Because, oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I thought you were through, Dave.
I am, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Capital Planning Committee. We were gentle on you, Dave, so you don't have to pull the plug on us back.
I go back and do sound. I'll get your in.
I'm Peter Bradshaw.
That's true.
I just mean going forward.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, let me stop and correct one thing. We failed to announce each of the members up there. We didn't, we never brought up Paul Gorman as an incumbent on the last committee, so Mr. Sant, don't remind me.
He's a Russian incumbent. I served out one-year term. I'm looking for three.
I'm Iris Smolowicz. I'm also seeking reappointment on the committee.
Both incumbents. Okay. Questions?
Good. We just went through the capital planning process and through town meeting and so forth. And the question I have for you is, what were the challenges this year in putting together the capital plan that you saw, if there were any? I don't want to ask a loaded question. But, you know, what was there that you might have seen that either we could improve or that you thought was a challenge that you had to overcome?
Well, as a person who was taught capital budgeting at the college level and trying to bring that knowledge to this committee, it seems to me that it would be highly desirable if we not only had an estimate of the output or the outlay, but also somehow if the department could provide us, if possible, with an estimate of the benefits, so that we can equate one to the other. And likewise, I've also proposed, I'm not engaging in self-aggrandizement here, but I've also proposed that when someone says it's important and someone else says this is important, somehow we should quantify that. And what I have proposed is a numerical system. One, if a category is given a one, it must be done. For example, we're mandated to provide handicap access. And even if we weren't, we should do it anyway. Category two would be something that we must do, even though it's not an external mandate, such as we have a condition in one of the rooms which requires maintenance. Perhaps the ceiling is crumbling and it's putting the incumbent in the office at risk and visitors. Category three would be important but lesser important. And category four would be something desirable, but we can defer that because we don't have enough money to meet everything that comes before us. That's the proposal that I have submitted, and I think it's under consideration. Because otherwise, we're all, everyone is on the committee saying, well, this is important, this is important. But we want to be more precise than that and somehow quantify, determine important.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Alan?
No. My experience the last couple of years when we've gone through the capital budget process, that it's, what you all are looking at are sort of immediate needs. You know, are we going to fund this truck or this project for next year? And for me, some of the most significant capital planning issues are just kind of longer-term, things that, you know, can't be paid for in a year. You know, the high school right now, we're paying on it for 30 years, you know. You know, there are other things that are coming down the pike, you know, senior center, DPW facility, maybe. And all of that sort of affects other capital needs we have. Do you all see yourselves kind of, what would be the value, if you think there is value, of you all taking a longer-term view?
The town manager has given us a heads-up. He gave us a complete package, which included a five-year plan. And many of the capital requests did go into fiscal '17, fiscal '18, and I think I recall fiscal '20. So we are, we do have some visibility as to what his long-term projects are.
All right, but it only goes, but it only goes to five years?
I don't think any of those items went beyond five years, yes.
I mean, because I guess the thing that's interesting to me, when we come to the point where we want to vote on something, I know every time I vote for something, I'm in essence saying no to something else. Unfortunately, a lot of times, I don't know what I'm saying no to. And I guess, you know, and so many of these things that we're looking at are beyond five years, you know, because they're so massive and sort of overwhelm everything else. I mean, do you all see any value in that? Or are you kind of content to be looking at things sort of as they are?
Since we serve the Select Board and the town manager admits the budget to us.
Yep.
Perhaps that's something you would address with the Select Board.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, just a quick question about your perception of how coordination of capital spending is working or not with some of the other organizations, which are... spending is working or not with some of the other organizations which are completing or recommending spending on capital projects. I know the community preservation picks up quite a bit of items, the water department, sewer department, other things, and how, how is that working from your perspective and what can be done differently to make it different or better or whatever?
Well, certain issues, we, we really can't quantify. If you have a proposal, let's say, a fire truck that will save lives, you can't quantify that. A life is precious, it is, has infinite value. Something like that, in my opinion, can't be quantified and has to be respected. Other proposals can be evaluated against another framework. Perhaps they can be delayed, perhaps two of these proposals can be combined into one to promote more efficiency and so on.
The other CPC Committee did fund some projects, and there was also chapter ninety funding for some projects, so we did look at a variety of different, other different projects, too.
Yeah, I believe by the, by the regulations, the state regulations, the Committee's charged with, you're charged with producing a five-year plan, and that really is what they evaluate. But I guess behind that five-year plan, you definitely have plans going fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years on water, sewage, sidewalks, asphalt surfaces, but it's not put out to the Committee, because by, by the regulations I've read, they normally look at a five-year window of projects.
The Charter.
Yeah, well, it's even, even, I guess it's Charter, but even when you get into the state guidelines on setting up capital planning, they recommend five, but, but a different issue is long-range planning, which falls back onto the town manager and department chiefs to, to have these larger databases.
And also, the understanding is, we evaluate projects that are at least ten thousand dollars in outlay.
Right, right, because I guess the value of having the team evaluate, well, because they could certainly be brought in a task force, but having them charged with looking at that, likely, there is value, but it's likely more limited, because it falls back on the town manager to have the large database, just behind the scenes. Okay? Thank you, gentlemen.
Is that something the select board would want us to consider in the coming year? Because as a group, we have started becoming a little more efficient, and we're getting better information. Stephen Crane has required of the department chairs or heads that they give a more detailed capital request. So we, I think, as a Committee, are working much more efficiently this year than in prior years.
Well, I guess until we change the Charter, though, we would stay with the five-year program. We, on Stephen's side, we can encourage him to go twenty and twenty-five and thirty, but for your Committee, the charge of it seems to be pretty well documented, and he certainly could use an ad hoc basis for review, but, but under the guise of the actual capital plan, it seems like five years is where it's been established. Am I missing anything, Stephen?
No, I think that's, when, we talked about the cost-benefit analysis and quantification prioritization, but once you get beyond five years, it's, it's really the guesses that you make on cost projections and what it's going to be in a, in a given year for a priority compared to something else is really almost meaningless, because, you know, we, you can certainly put, like, you could put a life, life cycle schedule together of all of our assets, which would fill up that, you know, twenty-year plan, you know, quickly, but what it's going to cost, you know, if it's something that's on the list, scheduled for replacement in year fifteen, but when that year comes, it's still in good shape, but something that was supposed to be replaced two years later is failing, you're going to switch them out, but you just don't know. So that, there's, in most, in most public works and, you know, administration circles I travel, there's limited, there's a dim view of the efficacy of twenty-year capital planning in terms of really assessing cost and priority.
Oh, you're in a better circles.
Yeah.
But the, the point is well, the well-taken, but in your cardiograph system, I would imagine once fully implemented, you will be able to put life cycle costs in there, and you'll be able to get a snapshot of how many heating systems, for instance, will be coming up in the year twenty, thirty, for instance, but it won't give the details, it'll just say you've got possible fifteen heating systems coming at you, seven roofs, there'll be large things, because that, that's all life cycling. I think you're moving towards that, unless I'm mistaken, with some of the reports we're seeing coming out of the cardiograph system. Anything, any other questions?
There could be some significant benefits to splitting projects, for example, if you want to do road replacement or something. Pay for the engineering within five years and then do the actual work, perhaps in the second ten-year period, so that you've split a project and you could benefit that way, too. An industry, customers may purchase the engineering portion before manufacturing execution of a project.
Well, I think you're starting to see that. You're doing engineering first and then coming, like, construction plus three, you do engineering and then construction in three years. And there's some of the larger projects, that's exactly the fast track they're on, and that's, that's the proper way.
Another interceptor's a good example of that.
Right, right. You've got the engineering money coming up to do it, and the tip program, we started three or four years ago, starting to fund the tip and get the projects starting in the, they say, the pipeline, so they will come out at the end. Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you. You guys doing great, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Community Preservation Committee.
Arlene Miller, six days east Greenwich Road. I'm a community, I've been a community rep on the Committee for, since it started, so I'm an incumbent.
It's a big I, right? Okay, anybody have any questions for Arlene?
I have a couple.
You have a couple, Chiefs?
Just a couple of questions. Couple of things that have come up from the town meeting, community preservations, and maybe this is more, first one's more in a case of, maybe we can take this back to the Committee and gain some efficiencies, and that was, we noticed that the CPA Community Preservation Committee has been submitting warrant, tummy warrant articles one at a time, and is there any opportunity to lump them so that, you know, there are four, I think, four subcategories of funding from CPA and...
There's four pockets of money.
Four pockets of money, right. And so, is there any chance of writing warrant articles so that funding from pocket A, the following funding from pocket B, so we get four warrant articles instead of twelve warrant articles?
Streamline the town meeting, right? I don't think it's legal to do that, because the town meeting has the authority to vote up or down on each project, and so if you...
But we do that on our capital planning program, where you can go back and, just something to look at.
Yeah, no, that's fine, we could, our chairman is here, and we can certainly consider that in the future.
If it's not legal, it's not legal.
We'll be happy to, to do that if it were, if it were legal. I mean, the idea is, is we need to identify, you're right, which pocket it's from and any restriction we have on it, and give the town meeting the opportunity to vote it up or down.
Right, and I realize that, and I know there are four different pockets, so that you, you're going to have at least four warrant articles, but we seem to have an awful lot of individual warrant articles.
That'd be great.
The, the other question I have is more in terms of the process for CPA reviews. There, one of the citizens at the town meeting asked about, you know, who can apply, and I, I understand the answer is, anybody who wants to apply can apply. It's, it's who should be considered, but you need not be a, a town entity to apply for CPA funds, and theoretically, private organizations can, and did, and did. And I guess the question is, is there a process for vetting the private organization's ability to pay themselves, as opposed to, it's something nice to do? Because there, I guess there was a perception that maybe some of these are items, you know, the, the organization might have had the wherewithal to pay for it if they were turned down by the CPA, but CPA is nice and it does apply, but, you know, I, I think you know where I'm going with this. Is there any opportunity to vet their ability to pay for these?
Well, not only vet, we ask, we actually have that conversation with, with the applicants. I think we look at, you know, how does this, is this project met our, meet the criteria of CPA? Is this project have value to the whole town? And what is the, what is the possibility of funding or partial funding from the, from the entity? Certainly a conversation. And then there's, you know, we have to be, we have to be convinced by the applicant that our money is necessary or needed for this project. But I think that's a point well taken.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'd just like to announce for the other fourteen thousand eight hundred residents
who are not at town meeting, that Arlene Miller was chosen as our Citizen of the Year, so we bask in the glory of you, and my question I have for you, I've got to tell you, you're Citizen of the Year, fourteen thousand eight hundred people weren't there, so. My question is, you've been on the CPC, I don't know if from the very beginning, but for a while.
Very beginning.
And the question I have is, because of the, when the state relaxed the restrictions of how that money could be spent, and I know Steve's back there, but you're interviewing for a different position, but is it become more challenging with all the articles that are submitted, or is there, are we, not to Mark's point of, you know, some of these organizations where you ask the ability to pay, but are we, are we overspending because the, the money's there and so is the request, are we, is that becoming more of a challenge because the reins were loosened, so to speak?
Well, no, the only relaxation, so to speak, of the law since it was implemented originally, is the addition of, of being able to improve recreation property, instead of having to have purchased the recreation property before you could improve it, which was the original law. No, I think it's exciting, frankly, especially for a town like Long Meadow, because we have, as you heard earlier, so many athletic organizations and so many youth that want to play sports, and we have so many fields that need, that need assistance. This is just a great opportunity to help with that, as you can tell by the tennis court, the track, all these things we've been doing, the center school, playground area, that we could not do before the relaxation. We, we welcome that. We, we try to, we always, before we start the final analysis, say, how much should we leave in the pot, how much should we maybe spend, how much, you know, so there's a, there's a great deal of dialogue and consideration before we spend the money, but we feel we're stewards of that money, and this money has been given to us not to just hold on and look at, but to use for the benefit of the community. So I don't personally feel it's more challenging, I think it's exciting, because we, these were areas we, we knew going into the community preservation law that Long Meadow cared about its historic preservation, and that was a no-brainer. We knew open space was special to the town of Long Meadow, but we also knew recreation was, but we couldn't do anything about it. So now we have this ability to use some of that money in that direction, and I, I think we're very, very fortunate that the town accepted this, this act, the Community Preservation Act, albeit at only one percent. Many communities have done three percent, and they get much more money than we do, but this is a conservative, responsible, I think, approach for Long Meadow.
Thank you.
Before she leaves, I just have a plug to put in. The, the next Committee we're going to be interviewing is the Conservation Commission, and, and I'm hoping that they'll be coming before the CPA next year with a proposal to support the Silvio Conti Federal Fishing Game Wildlife to take, to make improvements to the conservation area down, down in the, in the meadows. I think it's a, probably an ideal use for being considered for community preservation funds.
Well, they've already come for some, for the...
I think there's, there's more coming, I think, from what I heard at the last Conservation Commission.
To control some invasive species, that was, that was something we approved this year, but, great.
I have a question.
Uh-oh.
Do you, do you have a, my turn.
I know, I know, tit for tat, go ahead, Ted.
By the way, for the reason that interaction took place, Arlene was doing interviews of me this afternoon.
I was kind.
Yeah, you were kind. I had one question. Do you guys presently have a backlog of projects?
Oh, no.
Okay, does that, does that bother you that we don't have a, a backlog that's being generated? Are we, are we doing enough outreach to get projects developed that come before you guys?
Well, we had a lot of projects approved, and we spent a lot of money. I mean, we were, you know, a limit, limit to our ability to spend, obviously. We have, we have categories we have to spend, and it's, oh, thank you, oh, thank you, my hero is here.
If I may, maybe I could...
Please introduce yourself. Yeah, please introduce yourself.
Stephen Weiss, eighteen Pioneer Drive.
Was I suffering, or?
No, no, but I, I think I, to answer the question, Richard, we had seventeen projects, seventeen, seventeen applications this year, which I think was a record, both in terms of number and in terms of dollar amount. I, I don't think there's any shortage of people who are applying. What we did, and this maybe gets, this maybe is more than you wanted, no, we coordinated fairly well with DPW and capital planning and, and with the, with the town manager, because there were several projects that DPW asked both of us and of capital planning, we asked them to prioritize, and several of the project, and we, we approved several projects for DPW this year, and the reason we didn't do others was, A, a question about funding, and B, there's only so much that DPW, I think, can do in one year. So there's lots, you know, we're getting lots of applications, but I don't, and we welcome more. It made the process pretty challenging, but we, I, I think I echo what Arlene said, is that it's actually pretty exciting that we now have more opportunity to have a broader range of projects that we can, that we can review.
I guess my question was, on the capital side, there always is a backlog, there's a sizable backlog, and I was wondering if there's, because you've got some fairly specialized areas that you can go into that normally you wouldn't have the capital program going into, and I was wondering if, if you think there's more of an outreach needed to build that job jar, to have more projects in, or?
Well, I think, I think...
It's been a problem, but that's...
Yeah, I, I think, for instance, I think nine of the applications this year of those seventeen came from DPW, and we asked them to prioritize, and I think we, we approved the two or three, maybe, I think it was the three that they considered the highest priority. It won't surprise me at all if they don't get funded from capital planning this year that they'll be back on our list next year, and we don't have a problem with that thematically, so it may be, it may be that they just move up on the list.
Yeah, and there's always new projects for recreation. My goodness, we've just begun to tap that in the town, but I don't think, I'm, that's not a concern of ours at all. There's a lot of stuff that could still be done in town, and I think people, one gentleman was very vocal at town meeting about a lot of the CPA projects, and he and I had conversation at Long Meadow Days, and realized that, you know, we're lucky that we have this money to spend on, on areas that would be neglected otherwise, and so this isn't, this is not the high priority areas, this isn't the street falling in, this is, this is historic preservation, housing.
That's an excellent, that's an excellent point you're making, too.
I mean, it's a very limited stuff, but it's, it's, it's to preserve the special aspects of the community, and this community has benefited, I think, greatly from the money from community preservation.
And often, you're funding projects which may not hit the funding threshold on the capital side.
Probably would not be funded otherwise.
Okay.
Or would just slip through the cracks.
Right, and, and you're right, did a wonderful job this year coordinating with capital, and with Stephen, that the process is getting better every year, so, thank you, Steve, for all the hard work you're doing, and Arlene, you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No, no, thank you. Conservation Commission, right here.
That's it.
Yeah.
Just, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
Stephen Gazello, one-one-nine Viscount Road, seeking reappointment.
Let the question in begin.
Well, I have, the one question's, and Arlene kind of mentioned it, was brought up at town meeting, the invasive species, and I think, I don't know if it was completely answered. Can you address the, the issue that's going on? Because I had some other people had mentioned that, is, you know, what, what are we doing down there, down in the meadows with the invasive species, and what does the work entail? Because, again, fourteen thousand eight hundred people weren't at town meetings, so it might be a good forum to let people know what we're doing with that article.
Well, the, the basics are that we are trying to control Japanese knotweed and other invasive species, and it's something that you can't just do for one year or two, it has to be a constant. And one of the things we learned this year, because I also sit on the Community Preservation Committee, is that there is a concern, well, are we doing a maintenance? Why are we coming forward for this effort? And I think it's because people don't quite understand how, how difficult the problem is to control, and while I'm not an expert in that element on, on the Conservation Commission, I do know that without the controls that we are putting in place, it would be out of control, and we wouldn't be able to take the steps that we are now. So we're catching it, and it is effective. It's effective to do the work we're doing and to control it as opposed to do nothing. Yes, we would like to see improvement and train more people to, I don't think we can fully make it a volunteer effort, but we, we could certainly inform more people about it, and I know you talked about awareness, and I think you, you raise a good point. I don't think people are aware of the problem. So we need to take folks from the Conservation Commission, who are the most expert in it, as well as our outside parties like Chris Polatin, to come forward and do that educational process. So that, that's my answer.
Thank you.
So, just focusing on the meadows, you know, to me, you know, they're a great resource for this community, I like to go running down there, hiking, you know, that sort of thing, but it strikes me that they're not very open, you know? And what I mean by that is, you know, the trails, you know, are, you know, knotted up and all that other stuff, and, and what do you think are the prospects for making it sort of more accessible to people? I mean, you know, I've got this dream that we have a bike path that goes through there one day, I don't know, maybe, maybe that, that could never hap, maybe we would never have the money, maybe it would be environmentally inappropriate, but, I mean, just, have you, have you all thought at all about trying to make it more accessible to people?
Yeah.
Yes, that's a really good question because it's come up in our recent meetings and it is something that we want to improve on. And the, the question of the paths that you're even referring to have come up. And in our discussion with the Silvio Conti folks, they're talking to us, and I can address that a little bit, about the idea of working with them. I think we have a lot of questions that still remain unanswered with respect to how that process can be implemented. But we certainly, within the Conservation Commission, want to see better access. But with that comes a responsibility. And one of the challenges we've had is, is to control some of the vandalism that goes along with that. And we've had a very difficult time getting the state environmental police, if you will, to, to control the issues of vandalism on, you know, open space and on the properties, especially along the river. So, yes, we do want to improve access, but we want to do it responsibly. So we, we have to think each step through. And we are going to work with the Silvio Conti folks. And, and one other point I would make is, and I believe I, I mentioned this to Mr. Foster, which is that we are looking to raise awareness of the Conservation Commission as a whole. And, and I know that's been talked about in the past and we haven't quite achieved the level of awareness we would like to. But I've thought of some opportunities that we could take, like having things presented within the library to show people more about what we do, what, how much open space the town has. It's an incredible amount. So, things like that, I, I think we are looking in that direction.
And this Silvio Conti designation, do, do you think that would increase or decrease public access? I mean, because, you know, it's, it's a trade-off, isn't it? You know, between sort of keeping nature pristine versus allowing people to enjoy it? You know, there's, there's a, you know, sort of a balance there. So where, where would you see the Silvio Conti designation, you know, take us toward more, making nature more pristine or, or giving people more access?
Again, that's, that's a big challenge, but I do think in the long haul, it's beneficial to everyone if we take the right steps in planning it. Without the proper planning, you're right, you could end up, I mean, there were, there were questions that came up about how do you access that particular area with the railroad and going over any grade crossings? And that's something that I looked into because that's something I do professionally. And there are some concerns about how you would control safety from the people, possible kids coming in, young schoolchildren, you know? And having that access comes with, again, with more responsibility. So if it's done well, I think it could work well. But I think we have to proceed with a, a lot of homework and make sure we do it right.
Okay. No more questions?
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel on Aging?
Yeah.
And, and for the record, on the community preservation, we had one person that will be interviewed on 6/1. And for the Conservation Committee, we have two people that will be interviewed on 6/1 that weren't able to attend tonight.
I'm John Bond, 114 Emerson Road, looking to renew my term on the Council on Aging Board.
Okay.
Why?
No, we're gonna, you can get the next one, introduce yourself.
I'm Fran Miffett. I'm 81 Nevins Avenue. And I'm looking to fill a vacant position on the Council on Aging.
Okay.
I'm Mary Guffleron, and I'm an incumbent in the room for reappointment.
Okay, great. Now, questions? No questions?
Well, I'll ask one.
Okay.
Since your meetings are heavily attended by select board members and, you know, we have a good idea of what's going on, what are the, what are the things that you see as coming up on, I know that there's a COA study and so forth, but besides that, is there anything that's going on that you, that the board is addressing that you feel is going to be the issue over the next year or so?
We have short-term goals and long-term goals. Short-term, we have a wonderful new executive director. This, it's my short-term goal of giving her, of being her cheerleader and giving her all the help she needs. Long-term, the implementation of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission report.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think overall, I, first of all, I know a little bit about aging. And it's not an easy process. And I never, ever thought I'd be plugged into a senior center because I think we all have an image in our minds of what that is. And that's not what it is. Been volunteering there for, for a couple of years now and was asked by somebody who was on the Council on Aging if I would volunteer to do some community work to find out what's available in the various churches for the seniors. So I started attending the meetings. I've been to about four months' worth, I think, at this point. And I'm absolutely enjoying it. And, and I'm so excited about the possible, the possibility of being able to work, to be able to help the seniors in town with the transitions and avoiding the isolation and becoming active and just basically providing for the seniors. And that's a growing population and you all want to belong someday, you know that. But it's just a very exciting experience and I'm really enjoying it. I'm really enjoying seeing how it works. There is a hook with the Greater Senior Services also. And that would, it might be, that would be something I'd be interested in. As I did work with them as a professional when I, I was, I retired from nursing after 44, long years. And I have a lot of education in management budgets and negotiation. And besides all of that, I have a good sense of humor and find that that helps an awful lot, no matter what you're going through or what we're going to be going through as far as the Council on Aging. John's been one of my mentors.
I'd just add that Fran and I are already working on issues together. And she's not even on the board yet, but we're already working together.
I, I know.
If that means anything.
Wouldn't you like to volunteer for this? Wouldn't you like to volunteer for that? And without even realizing I was going to be elected from the, from the whole town, the Goldbreath trustee, I am one. And that was, that was something that I'm excited about because I don't think people realize, I think when they hear the word Long Meadow, they don't realize that there are some people that really need some good assistance. And as far as I can see from what I've seen from the Council on Aging, that's exactly what we're there for. That's exactly, it's, it's to, to spearhead for the seniors in town. And every day, there's another one, I'm sure, that comes along. Look around this room.
Any questions from board?
Would you like to say something here? Well, I think you touched on one thing very, very briefly, and that is, the Council on Aging is, Board of Directors is strongly supportive of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission's report and the need for a senior center that is more able to handle the needs of the growing demographics of the senior population, not only in, you know, in the entire country, but certainly in Long Meadow. You know, the way I see seniors, the senior population, I guess I should say, is that there's, there's three areas of, of aging after you reach that, you know, wonderful age 60 where you're considered a senior. And that is the, the active senior who is working and very productive and vibrant and has a broad social life, perhaps children local or not. You know, they're participating in the symphony and they're able physically to get around, et cetera. And, and many of them are certainly working. And many people today choose to work beyond the age of 60, 62, or 65. And our senior center does not address that certain segment of the population in Long Meadow. Really doesn't provide anything for them. Then you have that middle stage where people are, have, have some illness perhaps, or a spouse might be, or they have, or perhaps finances. You know, many of the people who are retired today did not retire with 2015 income from Social Security. Their retirement income is based on income that they earned 25, 30 years ago. You could imagine how tight that makes their financial budget on a monthly basis. So, those people begin to need not only the services, the wellness services that the senior center provides, but they also very much need the fellowship that the senior center provides. As, as Fran mentioned earlier, isolation is a huge problem with the seniors in our town. Many people out of pride, just, they elect not to participate. And the senior center needs to do a, a really good job of reaching out to those people to get them in, to eliminate the psychological problems of isolation. And then, of course, you have the frail elders, those people who are in need of attention or assistance in navigating what, what organizations might be able to help them. It is, quite honestly, the, the main reason that I had six years ago, come before you then, to become a member of the Board of Directors of the senior center is because I'm very active in a ministry out of my church that services seniors and frail elders with weekend meals. The federal program, as you know, covers it Monday through Friday. There's a gap on the weekends. Many people who are frail are not able to cook a, a decent meal for themselves. They're lucky, some people, you know, they're home from the hospital, there's no one there to help them. They're lucky if they can heat, heat a can of soup. So, because of that is why I initially joined. I ha, I do have to say that, especially with the rising demographics, I, we have a, a nurse that is paid for by the town, I believe, who, who, who does a wonderful outreach program. She does a great job. I have contacted her over citizens that either through the course of my business or ministry have come across that, that needed some assistance. And she went right out. I mean, she's very much on top of it. But things are changing and it's going to be, she's going to become lar, that group of people that need our help is going to become larger because we are aging quickly. It is, you know, the, the population here in town is, is definitely, the, the rise of seniors is huge. So, I think this is an excit, and, and the current facility that we have does not adequately address all of those needs, those three areas of the senior population. You know, the vibrant, active senior who perhaps might be still working. You know, we provide nothing at this point for them now because the senior center is closed so early in the day and is not open weekends. So those, their available hours, you know, it's just not open. We really don't provide anything. So I think it's an exciting time. I think that a, a new facility or modified facility, it's certainly timely. And the next three years, I think, are going to be exciting.
Which she said. The other thing, there's, there's, there's a lot of grassroots issues that people don't realize. You don't get a lot of seniors going to town meetings because the parking lot is too dark when they go out. They cannot see. Maybe just setting up an area where seniors could park, making sure that the lighting is more adequate. That would bring them, that's what people tell me, I won't go. I won't go because it's too dark. So there's, there's all those, those little things that add up to an accumulation of somebody just staying home with the television set. And that's not how it should be. Right?
Unless they're watching Long Metal Cape, Long Metal Cape.
Or may, or, well, maybe Down in Abbey.
Nice, nice plug.
Or Down.
Yep. Any board members have any questions?
No.
Nice briefing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cultural Council. Now, the Cultural Council, my list shows is we have one person that'll be interviewed on June 1st. And it looks like we had a lot didn't show up.
It looks that way.
Yeah.
I'm Jean Maisie, ours, 81 Wheel Meadow Drive, and an incumbent on the Cultural Council.
Any, does anybody have any questions for Jean?
Yeah, the, last year, there was an event at Stores Library-
Yeah.
-which I thought went over very, very well.
Thank you.
And is that going to be planned? Are there things like that planned, again, that, because there was a tremendous response to that.
There was, there was. And, and we're so thrilled about that because that's part of our plan. We, the Cultural Council has never produced an event of their own in the past. And we wanted to create awareness of who we are and what we do for the town. And also feature and highlight some of our local resident artists. Because there's a lot of low residents, artists who are residents of Long Meadow. So, so that was kind of our goal with our, our new event. And we are planning it, that, another event like that this coming November 19th.
Very good.
Yep.
Does anyone else have any questions? No. Thank you, Jean.
Okay, you're welcome.
The Historic District Commission, both, both applicants be interviewed on June 1st. Historic Commission?
Hello again. Stephen Weiss, 18 Pioneer Drive.
Margaret Cohn, 66 Woodland Avenue.
Any members have questions?
Yeah, well, that's a question. Historic Commission, obviously very different than Historic District Commission. And if you would just, if you could tell the folks what your role is versus Historic District?
Sure. The, there are actually three different historical groups in town. The first is the Historic Society, which is a 501, a separate, private 501(c)(3) organization. They run the Stores House and, and such. The Historic District Commission governs really just the, the green, the Historic District. The Historic Commission is the mission, if you will, and we don't have any budget, so it's, there's limits to what we do. But it is to, in a, I think of, is three things. Number one, to inventory the issues of historic significance in the, in the town, to, to help educate people about the resources in the town. And also, there are occasions where other committees or other boards in the town are doing something that may have some historical impact. And we are, we have, have the, we get cons, get consulted about those sorts of things. If there's, let's say, something, I can remember a couple of years ago when Bay Path College was putting in that wall. That's in Historic District. They came to us to, to review the plans. So it's that, those, those three sorts of things. I'm a bit of a history geek. So I, I joined this committee six years ago. This is my, I've finished two full terms. I joined because I, I love, I wanted to learn about the history of the town, which we have, we have a really rich history. And to the extent that we can help educate people about that, I consider that part of the mission.
What he said.
Any other members?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We go over to Parks and Rec. I guess we have Recycling Commission.
Signed in twice?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, you can split, like, your-
I'm Arlene Miller, 68 East Greenwich Road.
Question.
Was as a regular member, associate member, regular member. Looking to be a regular member again?
Historic figure.
Yeah.
Recycle Commission.
Good search.
Thank you.
And I'm Virginia Ryder, and I'm looking to become a member of the Recycling Commission.
Okay.
I have a question for you.
Okay.
Is that allowed?
That's not the way it works.
Yes, go for it.
Go ahead.
Did you, did you mention that you've set up a Sharps collection or a drug take-back at the police station? When did that happen?
Before.
Uh, when, last week.
Oh, fabulous. Because it would be great for us to be able to publicize that at the Hazardous Waste Event. Because they always want us to collect that kind of stuff, which we don't want to collect. And that would be wonderful information. If there's any literature about that, that would be, if you don't mind.
Oh, sure.
That'd be great.
And I neglected to say 20 Berkshire Lane.
I'm sorry.
No, I-
Oh.
Forgot the break.
Not a Sharps collection, a prescription drug collection.
New, new hauler, beginning July first, and we tried to publicize that at Long Meadow Days, I don't think we got...
Sorry, new what?
A new hauler. The, you all agreed, hauler, collection of trash and recycling at the curb, will be beginning, beginning on July first. We had had Allied Republic Services, the blue trucks, for five years, and now we're transitioning to the green trucks, Waste Management, same service. I don't think people will notice much difference except the color of the truck. The program stays the same. We hope to be doing more education and more implementation of our program, more awareness that if they, if there's too much trash, it'll be left behind, recycle the right stuff, all that. So, which is a good program, but this is going to be a good experience for the town, and the transition has already begun in terms of working with the town departments, and it'll be exciting.
Can you just, I was sitting the other night with somebody from another town who's extolling his virtues of, of their town's single stream recycling. Can you talk about the advantages of the Long Meadow dual-stream recycling?
Versus the disadvantages of single stream?
You could say that. In fact, you did say that.
I did say that. Did, that person said that? Well, our, our stream is, residents have to separate the paper products from the bottle and can project, products on the curb, and the single stream model, which is what some of the big cities around here have, Springfield, Chicopee, Westfield, and West Springfield, where you can put both of those things into one container. The problem is, when people think you can put, recycle everything, which is the way they promote those, those programs, is they get everything. So it's a lot of contamination in the singles, in the single stream mix. For communities that own their own trash trucks and recycling trucks and do their own routes, there's economies to be made by going single stream. It saves money. It's a hauling, it's a real big benefit to the hauling process. And yes, they get more stuff sometimes in the bin, the single stream bin, but it's not always desirable stuff. And so, big towns that own their, you can see in the, in the valley, the ones that have gone, own their own vehicles, Springfield, Chicopee, Westfield, West Springfield is one that does not own their own vehicles, but they've, they had a very high trash rate, some of their trash, the trash rate went down, the recycling rate went up, they've saved some money, but they won't be able to go to a program as, as good as ours, which has one barrel or bag free, or within the tax base, and then the overflow bag, which is the, the best program to reduce your trash and increase your recycling. So there's a lot that's coming out, and a lot more that will be coming out in the near future about the problems with the contamination in single stream, and I think, I would just say, stay tuned.
Thank you.
I was going to ask the same question, because, yeah, from time to time, somebody does ask why we don't have single stream, and there's more coming. Is there, is there a major problem with the cross-contamination, is that?
Yeah, I'm actually been asked to do a tour of the Springfield Materials Recycling Facility on Wednesday this week with a group, a national group of paper fiber packaging people, Paper Board Packaging Association people, adults. And they're not happy campers at all about single stream because they're, they use recycled fiber, they need it for cereal boxes and boxes and all that kind of packaging stuff, and the fiber that they're getting from the single stream facilities is just so contaminated, even though it was purported that the high-tech technology, the sorting technology would be so phenomenal, it would be laser this and laser that, and everything would come out clean. It's not. There's a big residual coming out of that, those facilities, between, you know, ten and twenty percent trash coming out of that stuff, where ours is about four to five percent coming out of the, the dual-stream facility. So it, you get, you know, if the markets, if we have no place to sell the material to, that the whole program just doesn't work. So I, I really, everybody's thought this was the thing, this was everybody's going to do it, but I say, stay tuned, keep your eyes open. A lot of problems being identified.
Richard, I think we also get a higher price for our recycle because it's cleaner.
We get a higher price because the processing is cheaper. The processing at the single stream MRF is very high-tech, and they have more trash, where our processing is, is less expensive.
Just to point out, because we got this in our, this week's summary, refuse for the year is up five point, excuse me, six point six percent through ten months. Our paper recycling, I believe that's paper, yeah, our paper cardboard recycling is up two point eight percent, and our glass recycling is up four percent through ten months.
Yeah, and I'm not happy about the trash number, and I think that's something that we will certainly talk about at the recycling commission level and see if we can't do more enforcement.
Does that represent an increase in bags sold, or is it just an increase in trash?
That's a good question, and that would have to be analyzed, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. We have that data, though.
Yeah, go ahead, Marie.
First of all, the things that your commission has done has been amazing, and the swap, the new swap bin that's down there, shop shop, that's fabulous. And I was thinking, maybe, it might be time to re-educate Long Meadow again about all of our recycle options that are here in town, whether it's the recycle center, or I know I just bought my first compost bin, and I'm very excited about with all my coffee grounds and everything going in. And we have wonderful LCTV, love to see a TV show where you guys sort of walk us through the whole thing and re-educate us and tell me how to use my house.
Talking trash.
Exactly.
That's right.
Arlene, talking trash.
And you mentioned, Marie, the, the swap shop, and I remember years ago, when I got involved as far as for myself and our household, and then taking things down to the swap shop, and my husband would always say, "Why are you always throwing things out?" I said, "I'm not, I'm repurposing them, so let's just keep going." And I think, in light of what you just said, the importance to educate the community on the fact that we do have this wonderful swap shop, as well as so many other opportunities for them to dispose of things, whether they're large aluminum, whether they're boards, whether they're TVs, all the electronics, it's important to get that education out in the community.
And the new hauler is an opportunity to do that. I mean, the new partnership with Waste Management will give us an opportunity to, an excuse and an opportunity to, to talk about this kind of, that's a great, great idea.
And thank you for joining.
You're welcome. I'm glad to be doing it.
We look forward to seeing you part of the show.
That's, oh, great.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Zoning Board of Appeals. For the record, Tree Committee, one applicant for the Tree Committee is not here tonight. He'll be interviewed on June first. Okay, it looks like we didn't have the Zoning Board of Appeals, so we're finished with our interviews, and we'll be reporting back on the status of these and making the appointments at our next meeting on June first. Stephen, you want to take over?
Sure, Richard. As you can see from the agenda, we've invited Kinder Morgan, formerly Tennessee Pipeline, who owned the gas, I think, transmission lines that run through our community and have for many years. As was noted in the resident comments, they recently installed pipeline markers to indicate where the pipeline is for safety reasons, and so there were some, I think, truthfully, there was a, not a great amount of communication before these markers went in, and we heard a lot of reports from residents that they came home from work and the marker was in their yard, and they had no idea it was coming. And so we wanted to invite Kinder Morgan here to kind of give, give an opportunity to explain to the select board in the community, you know, why they put the markers in, you know, why it's, you know, what the federal regulations are that either compel them or encourage them to do that. We've also invited Karen Gentili. Karen Gentili, she is from the Community Assistant, I'm sorry, she's from the Pipelines and Hazardous Material Safety Administration. And she, well, after Kinder Morgan gives us some remarks, she can certainly be here for questions and to essentially, you know, give the regulatory side of the issue, and I don't know if any residents are here who haven't spoken, but, you know, I think we all want to hear what, what they have to say. And I, I've spent time talking to Kinder Morgan, and I think, since this issue came up and, you know, the markers were installed, I'll give Kinder Morgan credit for being responsive and communicative. I just wish that level of communication had happened on the front end, and I think we're trying to sort through all of that. It's a recent transition from Tennessee to Kinder, to the new company, and so I think there is some, it seems like there's some transitional issues there, but I won't speak for them. So I guess I'd invite a few of the board, like, team from Kinder Morgan, come first.
Please, Mark, take the stand, or the stand, the seat.
Okay. No, you had it right.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a first round.
Do you want us to state names?
Throw it on there. Throw it on the sign.
Yeah, I'd like to just talk.
Okay, sure. I'm Matt Defar, I live in Cheshire, Connecticut, I'm the Public Affairs Manager.
My name's Don Perkins, I'm the Operations Manager for New England, I live in Wilbraham, Mass.
My name's Ron Basset, I live in Westfield, Mass. I'm the Director for Operations out of Enfield.
And good evening, I'm Jim Hartman, I oversee the land activities for Tennessee Gas, and I live over in my split.
And I'd just like to applaud the, like, I'm a commissioner myself, and you really hold them to a high standard, so I wish, I think you should applaud yourselves for that. I don't think you see that in a lot of communities. I certainly, when I go for reappointment, don't have to answer that many questions, so you do a good job.
Flattery will get you everywhere. Why don't you go ahead and, I think Stephen's pretty well briefed us on what's going on, so why don't you kind of brief the board and brief the TV community on what is going on?
Yep, so, Don, you want to just give an overview?
Yeah, I can go ahead and give an overview. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity this evening to meet with the board and discuss our marker, Tennessee Gas Pipeline's marker program, and just for the record, Tennessee Gas Pipeline is still the operator, Kinder Morgan is the owner of Tennessee Gas Pipeline. So we've been bought, sold about three times probably in the history, actually, maybe four, but I don't, that was before my time even. First, I'd like to apologize to the town and the residents, you know, for not providing more communication upfront with regards to the markers, and we did try, initially, we did inform some residents, but we recognized after coming through Long Meadow here that we were deficient there and that, for that standpoint. And, you know, we've changed our process now going forward as far as notifications, we're going to be notifying town managers going forward, and also residents and whatnot going forward. So we make sure we're going to improve the notification process. Tennessee Gas Pipeline has operated a pipeline in New England safely for sixty years, and it continue to maintain a safe pipeline operation, and we strive for that. As part of that due diligence, we're in the final year of a three-year program for basically installing markers to meet federally mandated standards and the Kinder Morgan policy. We also are updating the color. We ended up, over the years, have found that with the One Call system, that, that is now eight-one-one, everybody's familiar with that, they've assigned colors to various utilities, and yellow is natural gas, orange, which was our prior color, is now telecommunications. So as, as you can recall, many years ago, there was this huge boom in fiber optic, and then all of a sudden, orange markers started appearing everywhere, and there was some confusion there. So, you know, if you go down particularly Highway two-seventy around New York, you follow our pipeline, and you see orange, 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 and you can't tell who's us and who's the, the, or differentiate between the pipeline and then fiber optic. So we elected to move over to the yellow markers to make it clear that this is the gas pipeline. These markers are required by federal law and are enforced by United States Department of Transportation, which is a federal agency that has that jurisdiction over the natural gas safety, or over all natural gas pipelines. The markers contain information, basically, if in an emergency, on that marker, it contains what the product is, I forget to mention that, also, who's the operator, the emergency contact number, and then they also provide, based on placement, the basically general direction of the pipeline. These markers help prevent third-party damage, and that can be from an excavator, other utilities, for that matter, even town employees as we're digging, basically, anybody's digging in the ground, that's what they help for, the primary focus is on that third-party damage, and that is the number one leading cause for damage to pipelines. In fact, we were recently invited to a pipeline emergency response training. It was in New Hampshire, but they did the same response training in Pittsfield just recently, and it was the first time I've sat through it, they asked us as a utility to come in and sit in on the training, and I was very impressed with, you know, when they got to the marker portion of it, you know, they emphasized all the firemen, emergency responders in that room, you know, the key things, like I mentioned earlier, is what the product is, because that's their first thing they want to know, is I'm dealing with an incident, I'm not sure what it is, they could be coming in from other areas, you know, I want to know what the product is. They want to know who the, who the operator is, obviously, and how to contact them, because sometimes they're there before we even get there, okay? And they also want to establish general direction, you know, where that pipeline's going to and from, and a lot of that is to establish a response, figure out how they're going to respond to it. Obviously, they don't want to pull up and then be sitting right on the pipeline if they have an issue, or if it's, say, it's a leak of some sort, they don't want to set up right there. So they want to know where that asset is going, where that pipeline is going to and from. And that was basically some of the comments that were made from, involved liquid pipelines, all pipelines in general. Tennessee Gas policy for marking are based on DOT regulations and about sixty years of experience, including also DOT audits or FMSA audits, and what they're looking for as far as pipeline markers. They're placed basically so that the pipeline, each marker is line of sight, so you can clearly stand at one, and you can see the pipeline's going this direction, it's going this direction. They're also placed at areas where if the pipeline does take a bend or a turn, that you can see that clearly, if it does make a turn, and we put those markers right at that bend, so you can see which way it's going. They're placed, the DOT requirements are placed, obviously, line of sight at road crossings, at all railroad crossings, at highway crossings, and so basically, the whole, the whole thing is to make sure it's clearly evident where that pipeline is going to and from. Consideration is also given in our policy to add markers where if you're in a high-densely populated area, or if there's a higher risk of damage, you know, to the pipeline. So typically, you see that a lot in cities and areas where you've got utilities all over the top, which is Wolf Swamp Road, we have utilities, we work with them all the time, crossing, so feeding each one of the homes. Again, this is all done, all the markers are done for public safety. We'll make every attempt to locate the marker to minimize intrusiveness to the landowner. So we'll try to mark, put the markers on property lines, we'll put them, you know, we'll try to position them on their property so they don't have to look at them, but some cases, this is a difficult process, obviously, sometimes the terrain and changes in physical, positioning the pipeline, the physical obstacles make it difficult to do that, and sometimes we, we don't have a choice. So, but we continue to work with landowners to find a amicable solution to, that complies with regulatory and safety requirements.
Yeah, I've heard all the regulatory stuff.
The thing, and I keep coming, is what you originally said, I just can't fathom an organization the size of yours not having a better PR program. That, that just, that just blows my mind, how you could think, you can just show up and start shoving things in front yards without some type of publicity or notification process.
Yeah, I mean, we did, yeah, this is year three of a, of a three-year program, so this is the first time we've encountered this. You know, typically, we're, we're out there replacing existing markers and putting them on the pipeline. Now, we have, and we acknowledge, I mean, in this particular case, I apologize for that for some of the notifications, we should have made, we should have been better at making those notifications, and we have changed that process going forward, so. But again, in two years, we, we haven't run into this. Most people are aware the pipelines.
What do you mean, you haven't run into, run into what?
Opposition, you know, people, we have run into some complaints with landowners, okay? And then we typically work with them to place the marker such that it complies with our regulatory requirements and it meets their needs as well, so.
Okay. Marie?
You say this is for safety purposes, but the pipeline, you said it's been there for sixty years. Were there previous markers, or now you're finally sitting down and putting markers, and why, you're saying, is this a new regulation? How old is this regulation? I just don't understand. It all sounds reasonable, but it, when you look at the timeline, why here, why now? I mean, this, this is not a, something that's ten feet below the ground, it's something that's been here for sixty years, and now all of a sudden, we need these giant pillars because we have to be able to site as... You say this is for safety purposes, but the pipeline, you said it's been there for 60 years. Were there previous markers? Or now you're finally sitting down and putting markers and why? You're saying, is this a new regulation? How old is this regulation? I just don't understand. It all sounds reasonable, but it, when you look at the timeline, why here, why now? I mean, this, this is not a, something that's 10 feet below the ground. It's something that's been here for 60 years. And now, all of a sudden, we need these giant pillars? Because we have to be able to site, is, is there a danger that we didn't realize? Or, and have you been neglectful up till now? Or have suddenly, there's a mandate that's flying out of Washington that you guys have to answer in the past three years?
Yeah. You know, when these pipelines were first built, there were, there were certain regulations in place as far as marker posts that differ from today. And, you know, over time, you know, those regulations, you know, have changed, requiring marking in class three and class four areas, highly populated areas. They used to be an exemption, so, you know, that, that was one of the changes, but, you know, and that change came in, like, 1994. And then I would, I would say also, coupled, you know, with that, is the interpretation of that law. And, you know, I'm just going to say, over time, you know, through DOT audits, you know, industry workshops, you know, there's some questions on some of the vagueness, I'll say, in, in, in the, in the law itself. And then, you know, coupled with that, you know, about three and a half years ago, you know, that's when Kinder Morgan came into play. And we became part of Kinder Morgan. And, you know, I'll say this, with, with Kinder Morgan, there was a renewed emphasis in terms of public awareness, damage prevention. I mean, we changed our organization, you know, and then I'm going to say one other thing was the marker program. And so, back about three years ago, we started looking especially in the New England area, because there's a lot of, you know, a lot of encroachments in, in, in the New England area. A lot of buildup, you know, in terms of population. And, you know, over, over time, some of the marker posts, you know, either have been destroyed, whether it's through plow, snowplow and that kind of stuff. Sometimes they've been removed. You know, with that said, I'll, I'll say this, on Wolf Swamp Road, you know, we do have some missing markers, but we also added some markers, you know. And, so anyways, we, we started a three-year program, basically, and like Don had mentioned, you know, we're in year three of that program and should complete it, you know, at the end of this year.
More than a few years, I think it was a few years ago, there was a big gas explosion in San Jose. And I remember Mr. Gold asked our town manager to follow up because we have the pipeline in town as to what the, what the maintenance is. And we were told that there's routine flyovers of the area. And I know that because a friend had some yard work done and got a knock on the door from you folks, or not you, maybe not you, but saying, just be careful, that's our pipeline out there. So, so I know there's maintenance being done, or there's oversight, because the flyovers, I don't know if those are still being done, but, okay. So, the issues that I've heard from residents are that they're placed where they weren't before. So my first question, you, you answered one of them, you said you placed a few more. So the first question I have is, how many, how much is a few? And what was the issue with the ones that were there? Were they, and I mean, I, I've seen them on Wolf Swamp over the years, and maybe I just, they blend in with the, you know, as I'm driving. And now, it looks like, you know, you could probably light up the street if you just flash a little light on them or something. So the question is, how many more did you put in? And what was, what was the difference between those and the ones that were there? Was there not that line of sight that you were talking about? Because you can follow the path of Wolf Swamp.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I would say some of it, especially on the additions, was the line of sight, you know, that we were dealing with.
Can I ask one question before you? What, what do you, what is your definition of line of sight? What is, what is that marker? I mean, how, how many feet, yards, miles?
Yeah, when you're, when you're standing at, at one marker, like Don said, if you look, let's say, east in the direction of the pipeline, you see another set of markers. And if you look west, you see, you see another set.
But is there a standard of?
Well, see, you and I would see things just a little bit differently. Everybody sees it differently. But the thing is, it has to be readily discernible as a pipeline marker. I mean, you could see, I think I see yellow out there, but that doesn't really cut it. It has to be readily discernible and.
Have elevation.
Correct.
Right.
Is correct.
But there's not a lot of bends on Wolf Swamp. I mean, it, it, once you get on Wolf Swamp, you're on a pretty straight street for the most part.
Only, wow, on one end, actually, it gets really interesting. The pipelines actually cross a couple of times at one end. And then over on the other end, it, it goes, there's a couple, actually elevation changes and then it comes back down.
And then there's a series, on the, on the east end, there's a series of horizontal bends going around the corner and then into the ball field.
The ball fields, yeah.
Yeah.
So you don't know how many you've put in that weren't there, or how many additional? I'm just curious, because if you, can we, we can define that any way we want.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to say, we, we had sat down and talked about it, you know, as far as on, not at road crossings, but in, in, in property owners' yard, I think we came up with about eight, eight sets, is what we came up with.
Am I, out of the correct understanding, that there was no communication with any of the property owners over there?
Well, let me, let me clarify that. What we typically do on this process, now, we've changed this, okay, based on the procedure, but what we do is, we go through, our folks have to locate the pipeline, okay, and they knock on the door, okay? And check and see if anybody's home that installed the markers. So it was two cases where they tried to interact with the residents. Unfortunately, we're working during the day, okay? And this is where the flaw was, I think, in, in the system. Is we would go through a market and then put a flag in the ground or put a, or a stake in the ground, and then there's a crew that comes behind them afterwards and puts them in. And that's when the second opportunity to have an interaction is at that point. So, we realized after that, that, you know, we need to take a step back and then we've changed that process. And so we're going out ahead now, weeks ahead of time, and letting know, hey, we're coming into the area for the towns. And then also, if there's missing markers now, we go ahead and post a flag in the ground, give a letter to the landowners, along with a flyer and a number they can call us. And then we move ahead and keep going. And then we come back through and, and put those markers in after we make contact.
So I guess in this case, though, there was likely very, very limited communication there.
Correct. And I mean, a lot of that was over the past two years. We, we hadn't really run into this and apologized. I mean, that's something that we recognize.
I guess I, I wanted to sharpen the question that Marie had asked, because, see, normally when, you know, it's one thing to say a regulation requires something. I'd be interested in what the regulate, you know, if you provide the site. If you don't have it now, you could email it to us, because I, I'd actually like to read it. Because normally, when I think of a federal regulation requiring something, you know, it doesn't involve what you've described of sort of this process starting in 1994 of interpretation and, and a three-year program. I mean, it, it kind of makes it seem less than an ironclad requirement. So, so again, the devil's sort of in the details of exactly what the regulation says. I'm thinking, if this is a safety issue, that there's an ironclad requirement, you wouldn't wait three years for it. So could you elaborate a little bit more on what exactly you think your requirement is? I mean, we can look at the regulation to determine what it actually says. That's number one. And then second is, what is your understanding of what your authority is? I mean, how much, how far can you go from the, from the gas pipeline? Where exactly do you think you can go with these markers?
Selecting, Grant, I think the town manager was trying to get your attention when you asked the, the first question for the FMSA piece, since we do have a FMSA representative.
Well, I know, now I'm asking what you think you're require, I mean, because you, I mean, this is being sort of fueled by this, like, you know, my goodness, we have to be in Long Meadow and we need to do these things. So what is it your view of?
I meant the, the first question about the exact regulation.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that would be a FMSA question.
But you don't know what it is.
We'll address.
We have the regulations.
Oh, you know what it is, okay. So, so address sort of how ironclad this requirement is. And then second, what, what do you believe your rights and authority are as to where you place the, the markers with respect to the gas pipeline?
So, I, I would say to start off, you know, at the road crossings, you know, we put them on, on each side of the road crossings so that, so that people can clearly understand that that pipeline crosses the road. You know, as far as what I would call non-road crossings, cross-country, whatever, that's where the line of sight comes in.
No, I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, the, the pipeline is a certain width. So how far from the pipeline do you believe you can place the markers?
Oh, well, we, we try to place them over the top of the pipe. In some cases, where that's not possible, like there's a sidewalk, we, we would offset it some. But within our easement.
Okay. Within, within your easement?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and getting back to the requirement of, sort of, why now, like, why not two years ago? You know, what, what do you think you're actually required to do?
We're required to adequately mark the pipeline so you can visually see, again, line of sight and to see where it's going to and from. And again, it's to protect, it's basically to notify emergency responders or excavators that the pipeline is present. So you have to mark it, again, adequately enough so that they can visually see where it's going to and from and then provide, you know, the contact information. That's obviously, that's mandated too as well on the marker.
So what was it about this regulation that allowed you to sort of wait as long as you did?
I wouldn't say that, that we were marked. The pipeline was, was marked, okay, but what's happening over time, and, you know, our, we have 600 miles of pipeline, okay? And even from the guy, even the helicopter that flies bi-weekly, he flies every two weeks during the construction season, we call it. So, during any time the weather's decent, during the winter months, it's monthly. But even them, I mean, the orange markers could sometimes be difficult to see. They do report them in, okay? And say, hey, we're missing markers. They do even more so now, because now they can see the yellow, which is much more visible now than the orange ones were before. And that's part of the issue here, I think, is because they're, they're very visible. But we would replace them as we would find them. But we don't go trucking through people's yards unless we absolutely have to. And so if he missed a couple here and there, that's possible. And as, as you can imagine, as someone comes in, if someone comes through and removes that marker, after that, it becomes, you know, pilot goes through it once, he may not see it, oh, maybe there wasn't a marker there. This drove home for me, you know, a couple of years ago. I was in Connecticut and we got a call, our guys got a call, for a gas leak, okay? And it wasn't us. But that wasn't a gas leak. We were down there actually doing a mark on, the guy called us and said, hey, I got a gas leak in my yard here. And I said, and as we started going over to help him, we realized it's right on top of our pipeline. So as we started researching this, we found that it, I won't mention the LDC, but the LDC that was, they knew about it. They grade their leaks and they hadn't got to it yet. And I said, well, how come you didn't give us a call? And then I answered my own question as I started looking up and down, and I noticed, you know, all the markers had been pulled out. So they were gone. And he said, well, I had to get your notification, but I didn't think about calling you guys. And I had those markers, that was the day for me, it was like, you know what? That's the day. It's like, where are those markers?
Just one last question. Does this have anything to do with the metering station?
Absolutely, absolutely not.
Okay.
Do the markers have to be as tall as they are, so? Is that the regulation on that?
Now, again, that goes based on line of sight. And we can, you know, we'll try to, we try to keep them, you don't want them real short, because around here, we have snow. And that's the biggest thing we have to deal with here. So we try to keep them right around four feet. We do have locations in swampy areas and some others where they're as high as six feet. But again, it's all comes down to line of sight. So if you're sitting here and you're looking up over a hill, you got to be able to see the top of that marker.
You have more of them, right?
Yeah, you can have more of them or make them taller.
Right, okay.
I guess my question gets down to a little bit, my question's about a little bit more also of why now and what's different. And, you know, I, I, having worked in a highly regulated business for many, many years, I, I think in terms of compliance, compliance to federal or regulatory standards and then compliance to internal standards. You described both. And I guess my question is, you know, were you out of compliance with, out, external standards that required you to do this? Were you out of compliance with internal standards? And if so, when did those standards change? And if you're not out of compliance with them, my next question is going to be, then what is your standard and why did you go to the high frequency you did here? And what's the leeway or the, pardon the expression, but the, the options for choice that, that, that Kinder Morgan has within doing this? In other words, is there, is there some discretion of citing this? So, again, it's, you know, what, were you out of compliance with either out, external or internal standards? And if, if so, when and what are you doing to do that? And if not, what's the discretion with what you're doing?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess one thing that, that I would say too is, you know, it's, it's not as though the marker program was non-existent, you know, in terms of replacing markers. You know, that, that was ongoing. Now, with, with that said, you know, I would say that, like I said about three, three and a half years ago, you know, in, in reviewing the New England area, we felt that, you know, we'd gotten behind. And so, that's when we kicked off the program, you know, this three-year program.
But is that an internal standard or an external standard, or just a, a desire by the regional manager to have a higher level of, of marking?
Well, you know, with Kinder Morgan, you know, there's, there was some change in language, you know, in our policy. And, and that's where the line of sight got introduced. Not to say that that wasn't a requirement before, you know, I can't, I can't necessarily say that. You know, our procedure was slightly different, you know, previous to Kinder Morgan. But I think in, in the Kinder Morgan language, it's spelled out, you know, pretty clear. So, again, you know, maintaining, maintaining compliance, maintaining these pipeline markers isn't static, it's, it's dynamic, it's ongoing, you know, that, that has, and, and we've been doing that. But again, we, we felt there was an area in, in New England where, you know, we needed to add more markets.
So there is no regulatory requirement? This is totally an interim?
No, no. I mean, we, we feel that that's the correct interpretation of the regulatory requirement.
If you would replace the old markers that were orange with the current markers that were yellow, however, you remained in compliance with, with federal regulations?
No, because we had some road crossings that were missing in, in, on the Wolf Swamp Road. And we felt like there was some line of sight issues as well.
Well, I guess I'm following the same feeling that we're sort of hearing on this board. It's not just a matter of communication. I think the board, the Kinder Morgan had decided they were going to use the language and the interpretation of the 1994 of line of sight. And you have the right to do that. But I think the issue is that you really have to start doing more of a balancing act when you start looking at where you are marking it in New England. And if it's a flat road and it's not a lot of trees, I mean, I think that you have to be willing to bend how you're going to be placing these things. And a conversation has to occur with the communities. Because I'm not sure if line of sight is really necessary when you're talking about, because what is line of sight? As you said, well, I see differently from he sees differently. So there is a range here of what line of sight is. And I can understand where you say you need to put it on the, next to the intersections, because you feel that's important. But I think there is a balancing act that could have occurred here and we really, in the future, should be looking at more communication and look at the communities and deciding when you can have this expansion. Because it is a 1994. I know my brother is in railroads and he's always telling me, when, you need to have all of these markers. You need to have the safety levels. But it is, it's an interpretation. You even said it in the very beginning. It's your internal interpretation of what's required. And I don't know if we really have any ability to tell you, pull back, really change your interpretations, look at what the community needs are. But I, I feel you should have had more conversation on the community needs.
Yeah, and I agree.
Yeah, and we don't disagree about the, about the communication at all. You know, we're, we're in total agreement with that. And like Don said, I mean, we want to try to find a solution for this situation. We've looked at different types of marker posts where, you know, the posts themselves is, is less intrusive, it's not four-inch wide PVC, it's, it's, you know, some channel metal that, that blends a little bit better, I'll just say, with, with the background. You know, that's something that, again, we, we've discussed, it, you know, that's a possibility. And, you know, we'd have to run it through all of Wolf Swamp Road, because, you know, we can't just put a couple here and there, because, because then it gets confusing as to, you know, what pipeline is being marked. And if you see it. And if you see, well, yeah, right, exactly, what they look like. You know, we need to have some uniformity to that in order to know that it's the same pipeline. You know, and, I mean, the whole purpose is pipeline safety. I mean, that, I mean, there's no other, there's no other reason to.
Can I, I'm really shocked that pipeline safety is based on posts sitting in the ground. I mean, I would think you would have more GPS and higher tech and that you have to actually have a helicopter. So I guess a lot of that does surprise me. I thought you would have more of a electronic measurement or?
Yeah, yeah, and we do. But the thing is, I mean, we do have a lot of the, well, 811 has been a tremendous help for us, okay? And that is, call before you dig and make sure people utilize that. But we find people all the, all the time when our pipeline patrols in a helicopter. Just happened recently, you hover and sit on, barely hover on people until we get somebody there to stop them from digging. It's amazing, you know, that they still will do that, you know? And even sometimes there's markers there and they still do it, even though, you know, it's just, but for whatever reason, they missed it. But that's why they're important to see there. It's kind of the last line of defense. And just realize that markers are just all encompassing of our safety program. You know, we have a lot of the maintenance we're required to do. We do inline inspections with pigging, you know, we do that based on, every five to seven years. That looks at the integrity of the pipe and we inspect the pipe and repair it as we find things. So it's all encompassing, it's all part of the overall program.
Yeah, Alex has a question. After that, would it be nice if we could bring up the federal?
So I just had a, because one of the residents contacted me and she believed that the markers were not on the easement. But from what I'm hearing from you is, you believe that wherever you put markers was on the easement?
Yeah, yeah, because it's located based at the top of the pipe, you know? And then basically have so many feet on either side of the pipe.
And how many feet is that?
It varies property to property, but it's approximately 45 to 50.
Forty-five to 50?
Right, because there's two pipelines in the ground.
There's a 24 and a 30 inch.
Yeah.
Forty-five to 50. So this is a pretty wide area.
It is, yeah. But it's different from property, but I couldn't tell you every single property without picking up every property.
All right, so I think I understand. And how below the ground is the pipe?
Anywhere from, you know, three feet is typically where they install that. But they go underneath roads, they could be five. I mean, we've bored under rivers and other roads 15 or more feet, so.
So it's only three foot down?
It could be deeper, it could be deeper on Wolf Swamp.
Wow.
Yeah.
In Wolf Swamp, it's a little bit deeper, which is the reason the snow melts.
Yeah, yeah.
But those augers, you know, from the poles, they go, I mean, we have to be there when they put them in and they go right over the top of us and they're down that deep too, so.
Okay.
And I don't know if you guys made the comment, but one of the things I learned through this process is that some of the markers are part of electrified?
Protection.
Protection, cathodic? Yes. Cathodic protection. And then, and then some of them are really hard, you know, really affixed to the pipeline because they are vents.
That's correct.
And so I want to clarify, that's, you know, it, there's a lot out there and it's jarring to go out and see all the markers. But I did acknowledge that some of them serve a purpose beyond just, you know, denoting the location. So I don't, I'm not here working for these guys, but I thought it was important to.
Just to clarify, it's not a vent on the pipeline, it's a casing. Years ago, when they installed them, they put casings and then they put the pipe through it. And in that casing, there's a vent on that casing. And it's just a, obviously you don't want it in the ground and moisture is allowed to sit in there, it allows it to breathe, so.
That's what I meant.
And so we've been cutting those off and then putting the marker on. And then one other thing, just, I mean, when we've experienced FMSA audits, and I mentioned it earlier, you know, one of the things inspector every time, he's gone out to the field. And when they want to look at the markers, they sit there and he looks, he goes, line of sight. And they go this way and this way. And then he also takes out his ruler and measures the lettering, because there's a requirement too on the lettering as well. And the size and, you know, the information on it.
Okay. Is everybody in favor of bringing up the federal representative? So gentlemen?
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Could you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Karen Gentilly and I am one of the Community Assistance and Technical Services Managers for the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, commonly referred to as FMSA. I'd like to thank you for inviting me here tonight so I can provide you a little bit of background on, you know, who our office is, what we do, and pipelines and pipeline safety. Because pipelines are underground, a lot of them are, you know, out of sight, out of mind. And public awareness is a key to preventing pipeline incidents and keeping pipelines safe. I understand that there, let me go back. I actually work out of the Eastern Region Office. Our office covers from Maine down to Virginia and over to West Virginia and Pennsylvania. And we just acquired Ohio as well. And there's four other FMSA regions throughout the United States. And FMSA, it falls under the United States Department of Transportation because our focus is on the safe and reliable transportation of energy products, primarily natural gas and hazardous liquids such as petroleum products. And we have federal, we have the minimum federal safety regulations governing pipeline safety. Those regulations can be found in Title 49, Code of Federal Regulation, Part 190 through 199. And those specific to natural gas transmission pipelines such as the Tennessee Gas Pipeline are covered under Part 191 for their reporting requirements and Part 192 for the design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the pipeline. And bottom line is we want to keep the product in the pipeline. Our regulations are focused on pipeline safety. Under the regulations, FMSA develops and implements those regulations. And we have inspectors that go out to, as a safety check, to make sure that pipeline operators are in compliance with those regulations. So FMSA inspectors go out and they will inspect pipeline facilities, their management processes and procedures, their records and documentation to make sure that they're in compliance with the federal safety regulations. If we do find issues, we can require remedial action, we can assess civil penalties, and if necessary, we can also initiate criminal actions. From, from what I understand, there have been concerns in this community regarding the placement of pipeline markers. These pipeline marker regulations are covered under Part 192 and specifically 192-707. And this dictates the location of pipeline markers. And in that regulation, buried pipelines have to have markers at road crossings, railroad crossings. And it says wherever necessary to identify the location of the transmission line or main to reduce the possibility of damage or interference. One of the primary causes of pipeline incident is third-party damage. Whether it be an immediate effect or if an excavator is out there and they mistakenly scratch or nick or dent the pipeline and don't say anything and cover it up and it goes unnoticed. So we wanted to ensure that people know where the pipelines are to keep pipelines safe. And in concert with the pipeline markers, there are also requirements for pipeline operators to have public awareness programs, which are also dictated in the regulations as well as additional regulations that are what we call incorporated by reference. Not all the regulations for pipeline safety are in this book. We have a host of regulations that are what they call incorporated by reference in part or in full. Where those regulations, rather than rewriting the regulations, we incorporate the industry standards as part of the regulations. And then in addition to the regulations that are spelled out in the code, we require pipeline operators to have operation, maintenance, and procedures. It's often referred to as an operation and maintenance manual, O and M manual, where pipeline operators need to describe the five Ws, the who's, the what's, the when's, the where's, the why's. And that's part of their procedures. And we hold operators responsible not only for what's in the regulations, not only for what's in the Incorporated By Reference standards, but also what's in their processes and procedures. So we can also cite them for not following their processes and procedures. When we go out, when we have inspectors who go out on a pipeline inspection, what they'll do is generally to address pipeline markers. If you're standing at one pipeline marker location, you want to be able to look upstream and downstream of the flow of gas to find out where that pipeline is. Because you want to know the location of the pipe. If it takes a jog or a turn or if you, you know, lose it for going over a hill. So it's, as Tennessee Gas explained, you know, we're looking for general line of sight. You know, that is a varied, people have different senses of vision. But, you know, you can't send somebody out with a pair of binoculars or, I think that's a pipeline marker. It needs to be readily identifiable to make sure that you know where that pipeline goes, both upstream and downstream, as well as at the road crossings and the railroad crossings. One of the requirements as part of the public awareness requirement is to let certain stakeholder audiences aware of certain messages in that public awareness message. One of those messages being the location of the pipeline. So oftentimes, public awareness material will denote, you know, there are pipeline markers there. Certain information needs to be on those pipeline markers such as the name of the operator, the name of the product, and the telephone number 24/7 where that operator can be reached. And then there are specifications in the requirement for the sizes of the lettering and the contrasting colors. In the past, I know the markers in this area were the orange color. It's good that they are going towards the yellow color because yellow, if you look under the Common Ground Alliance, there's a whole network of other utilities underground. And orange has typically been associated with telecommunications. We want this to be recognized as a gas pipeline. We want those markers to, in their public awareness material, to also be representative of the markers that are actually out there in the field. The material that an operator sends out in terms of public awareness material, you know, should match the same marker that's out there, you know, what's on the brochure should look like, you know, what's people can see and how they readily identify it. Because we need people to not only identify that it is a pipeline, but we want people to know whose pipeline it is and who to contact if there is an incident. Other than that, it is a, we do ask the public to respect the pipeline markers. And it's also a requirement to respect those markers. It is a penalty, it's against the law to deface those markers, remove those markers, or destroy those markers. We do understand that things do happen to these markers. They get hit by plows, they, you know, get hit by vehicles and things like that, they get taken down. And we require pipeline operators to maintain those markers so that they are visible over time. They start to fade, the lettering starts to go away, their telephone numbers might change. We've had inspectors, they'll call the number on the pipeline marker, make sure that that's an active and active phone number. So that's just kind of a quick synopsis. Our, you know, mission is pipeline safety. Again, we want to keep the product in the pipeline. We want people to know that the pipelines are there so we can prevent them from third-party damage. It's amazing how many people really don't think about pipelines. Again, they are out of sight, they're out of mind. I've been in groups, of large groups of people, and I'll ask how many people have heard of 811, the call before they dig. April was Safe Digging Month and we try to promote that as much as possible. FMSA participates as part of the Common Ground Alliance. I don't know, the horse racing last year and this year, the jockey was sponsored by a lot of pipeline operators in 811. He's wearing 811 hats, he's got the logo on his boots because it's a message we need to get out there and we want people to be aware of because it's, you know, it's protecting, you know, you and your neighbors, you know, knowing that that pipeline is there and what to do in the event of emergency.
I have two things. Two-point question. Was there anything that we were told tonight that you would consider to be not accurate? And the second one, is there anybody that regulates the excessive markers? I mean, is there, do your inspectors say, hey, we think you're being excessive on your markings here?
We, we have, we set the minimum federal safety requirements. So what's in our regulations specifically for pipeline markers under 192-707 is the minimum requirement. If a pipeline operator has in their processes and procedures something that varies with what's in that requirement, we hold them to executing not only their processes and procedures in addition to the requirement. So if an operator wants to, you know, go over and above on that, you know, we encourage it as opposed to discourage it. Because again, we want to keep the pipeline safe.
Okay, is there anything we were told tonight that you would consider to be inaccurate?
No, I can't think of anything. I know that there were, you know, there were questions about the regulations and the dates and when those came into effect and laws changed. I know over the last six years, the regulations pertaining to pipeline markers, you know, has been what it has been, that hasn't changed in the last six years that I'm aware. And we have, there have been numerous enforcement actions taken against pipeline operators for not having adequate line markers, where you can't tell which direction the pipeline's going, you can't see line of sight. Those, FMSA has taken enforcement action against pipeline operators for not having adequate markers. And there have been several cases on that. Maybe, you know, I think operators are getting the message that, hey, you know, we're out there. We are holding them accountable for having adequate markers and public awareness programs. And we're looking for improvements to be made as opposed to, you know, taking a step backward.
Paul?
Thank you for coming in. Without trying to sound like too much of a smart out, is there anything in the book, the regulations that protect the town, for example, or the residents in terms of, and I understand the gentleman apologized and said we could have done this better. But you talked about stakeholders regarding something else. I would imagine that the homeowners in the town is a stakeholder or are stakeholders. Is there anything that, in those federal requirements that protect us?
There are requirements for the stakeholder awareness under the public awareness regulations require residents, businesses, emergency responders, public officials, and excavators. There are certain messages that need to be delivered to those stakeholders in terms of safety, where the pipeline is, how to recognize an issue, what to do if you do suspect an issue, who to notify. But there is nothing that I am aware of in terms of placement of those, right, those line markers on the pipeline, the regulations, there are, if it's not, there are exceptions in the regulations to those, the location of the road crossings and being able to see it. And one of the exceptions is, you know, where it's, oh, let me just, where placement of the marker is impractical. So we don't want to cause a hazard with that marker. You know, you wouldn't want to put it in the middle of the sidewalk or in the middle of the road where it's going to cause more of a hazard than good. But there are right-of-way agreements between the property owner and the pipeline owner. And those right-of-way agreements, it's a civil matter. FMSA does not get involved in the civil matters. It's an agreement between the property owner and the pipeline operator, what can and cannot be done on that pipeline right-of-way. And we don't get into that. Again, our regulations are strictly focused on safety, what pipeline operators need to do to properly operate it and maintain it to keep the pipeline safe. You know, cathodic protection systems were mentioned. It's to prevent corrosion on the pipeline. Patrolling the operator, there's prescribed requirements for how often a pipeline operator has to patrol their pipeline right-of-way to look for hazards, potential leaks, excavators out on the pipeline. So there are those types of regulations that are dictated. And there are also more performance-based regulations which the operator needs to. performance-based regulations which the operator needs to, we expect the operator in their processes and procedures to spell out the who's, the what's, the whens, the wheres, the whys, and all the detail in between the regulations that we hold them accountable for as well.
But just one, one hypothetical, if, if the, if the owners of the pipeline decided, we want to put in a third pipeline or we want to move a pipeline, is there regula, regulations in which they have to notify homeowners in towns and cities and so forth that goes on?
FMSA does not, uh, FMSA's jurisdiction is limited by what is in those pipeline safety regulations. We do not approve pipeline projects, we don't issue permits for, in terms of, for example, natural gas pipelines, a construction, if a construction project is approved, typically it goes through, through the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission and it follows their processes and procedures. So, FMSA does not say yea or nay on a project. We don't approve a project. Um, where our jurisdiction kicks in is if a project is approved, then we make sure that it's constructed, operated, and maintained in compliance with the regulations to keep that pipeline safe.
Thank you.
Marie. I guess my disappointment is what you talk a lot about is public awareness, and that's the important part of safety for people not to know how to dig. And this was, it just shows that the public awareness element of all of these safety regulations seems to be left on the sides. And it almost sounded like people were chasing the line of sight because that's where they were going to get the fines and the penalties because you said you'd go after them for that. But I think this is the, shows that the weakness is the landowners who really have to be careful about digging there were not informed, it would have been a great time for public awareness and education with them, instead they were thrown down there without really discussion with them and education. And I'm just suggesting in the future, you really look at, because that's supposed to be the purpose of it, is public awareness and the greatest danger they're telling me is someone deciding to go dig in that area, which means the landowner. So, that's where the communication is safety and that's where they have to really go look at it next.
Now, there are, as I mentioned, there are regulations that require certain messages be delivered as part of public awareness. Residents living along that pipeline corridor should be receiving a brochure. Um, residents are required to get that message every two years. Um, public officials every three years, emergency responders on an annual basis, and excavators on an annual basis. They should be providing, typically it's done via mail because we require documentation and records to show who the brochures were mailed to, um, when they went, and see the actual material that was provided to make sure that it includes the required elements of, that the public awareness program dictates. Um, so, those regulations are again in, under the public awareness section as well as in American Petroleum Institute Recommended Practice 1162. Um, so those messages need to go out to those, those stakeholders to make sure that they are aware of those messages. Um, I have been involved in inspecting public awareness programs for pipeline operators. Um, and we want to, and they do keep records and brochures, sometimes they'll send a reply card back with questions, um, sometimes they'll host events, training events for emergency responders, but, and I also have looked at the attendance and the participation in those and it, um, in some cases, it's discouraging because a lot of times that material's not necessarily being read. Um, I would encourage residents, you know, any, you know, information they do get from pipeline operators to read through that, it does include important safety information. Um, it should include information on how to find out about the location of pipelines in, in their area, how to, you know, recognize a potential problem or a leak, and, you know, what to do and who to contact. So, that, that information should be going out. And, you know, if there are residents right along that corridor who, you know, aren't receiving that information, you know, I would be happy to, you know, know that because I, that's something I can check into to make sure that they have been sent the brochures and the information as required under the regulations.
Maybe we'll follow up on that and see. Thank you.
So, um, you, you may have mentioned right-of-way agreements, and I, I guess what I took from your comments is that regulations themselves do not confer the authority to go on somebody's property, or do they?
The regulations are strictly focused on more or less keeping the product in the pipeline. Those right-of-way agreements are a civil matter and they're outside of our jurisdiction.
I guess, you give my question, so, does, I mean, normally you have to have authority to step on somebody's property, right? So, do the regulations give that authority, or do the right-of-way agreements give that authority?
Our regulations don't give that authority.
Okay.
Um, our regulations give inspectors the authority to inspect pipeline facilities and enter pipeline facilities and look at their records and documentation, but they don't get into, we're, we're regulating the pipeline operators, not, not the public. So, the pipeline operator, you know, might have more information on those.
So unless the, so unless the right-of-way agreement gave the authority to go on somebody's property, they couldn't go?
Under our regulations, a pipeline operator needs to patrol and do certain functions on that land, how they go about doing it, um, and, you know, what arrangements they need to make with property owners is, is outside of our jurisdiction.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Any other follow-up you want? Yeah, we, yeah, we see, is there, we had open questions before, but is there any other questions? Would you like someone to take the mic, please?
Hi, okay. I, I took some notes during the presentation and I'll be really brief. Okay. Um, I'm Michelle Van Scowen, 573 Wolf Swamp Road. Uh, we live at the top of a hill across from Twin Hills Country Club and between our two properties are two four-foot markers which are visible for maybe an eighth of a mile or more. Um, just very quickly, my notes and...
Can I actually introduce myself? I'm Karen Tullman at 585 Wolf Swamp Road.
And Bruce.
Karen Tullman, 585 Wolf Swamp Road.
And Bruce Tullman, 585 Wolf Swamp Road.
Property owners of, in general, along our street, and I don't know about all of them, but I know that the people who owned our home prior to us, uh, were given nominal compensation in, in the preceding owner's case on our street, $10 plus repairs of the lawn for where it was damaged during a 1990 amendment of an easement that we've researched that doesn't mention anything about markers. And what I feel is that the markers which could potentially, as I'd mentioned earlier, be replaced by flat markers along the lawn, which are used in many parts of the country and include all the same information and could in fact be yellow, I suppose, uh, don't give you the line of sight, but if you have them along the property, you know darn well not to dig. What we have now is property that I think has probably lost a good deal in, in value, has certainly lost pretty much all of the enjoyment that we, I wish I'd sold it a month ago. I'm very, very deeply unhappy. Whether they have a right and an obligation or an interpreted obligation to put up these markers, they have, have damaged the value of our property, I believe, and certainly our enjoyment in the property up and down the street, some places more, some less. We aren't on a street crossing, we're at the top of a hill with two, what were originally six-foot markers.
Yes, originally.
And they came back and gave us four-foot markers. They look like giant lit cigarettes from a quarter mile, very quickly through the rest. We have not received any safety mailings in years.
Yes.
Just so you know. I don't know if anyone has. Um, counting not, uh, road crossings and non-road crossings, I would estimate that Kinder Morgan in the last two weeks has put in over 30 markers.
Yes.
We did not have a lot of markers along our street, orange, white, or anything else, maybe a couple. We're littered with them now, it's at least 30 more than there were before, if you count road crossings.
Well, can I add in one thing? Um, it was a few years back that they put these markers at the end of the roads that we saw, and I, I believe there were no complaints about that, so that they were at crossings. I think that was a few years back that that was done.
Just a couple.
And, and the way they had implied before that there had maybe been markers here in the past, we have been here 21 years, there was never a marker where there are now. There was a few years ago, markers placed at the end of the roads, and that is correct, you know, the ones at the crossings.
But they have not replaced...
These are not replacements of markers, no. I wanted that known.
We do believe, we do believe the timing i, is more about something than a sudden seal for safety, we cannot help but believe that. And we do strongly believe, as several of you said, that this is more than a problem with their communications. This is a problem with essentially not looking for alternatives in a neighborhood where, I'm not necessarily, I don't know road crossings or what, I'm not, I don't know, but I know that in between the lawns and such, there have to be alternatives because they've destroyed property values on our street. Um, I think that was it for my notes.
And another thing to sort of note, because I actually, um, the, these markers are placed, and I thought it was interesting that you had said before, um, how big these easements are. They have actually chose on this road to put these markers, and I'm actually amazed how big they said that their easement is because these are markers are not where you often will find them as you travel around areas, which is at the end of the roads along, you know, the end of your property, where actually the town often has a little bit of your rights to. These are literally 10 feet from our house, and we have an extremely large front lawn, but they're not down the end, they are literally outside our living room window. On a property of an acre, they chose to put it 10 feet from our house. And I find it interesting that that is all that they claim that they own, but now I'm hearing they might perhaps have a much bigger easement than I actually even had thought. But that is where they chose to put it on most of Wolf Swamp, literally right next to our houses, and we have fairly large lawns, as many of you know, on that road, that is one thing we have, because to remove us from the road, but now we have a marker.
I would say as well, that at least the wording in our easement mentions nothing about markers. I think that Kinder Morgan either owes us less obtrusive markers or may owe the residents of Wolf Swamp Road significant compensation for loss in property value, which we'd prefer fewer markers, honestly. This isn't for bond...
Do we have to sign it?
No. Just so you know.
Yes, my name is George Sekalas and I live at 539 Wolf Swamp Road. I've been living there since 1974. There was two houses or two lots available back in 1974. All the utilities under those two lots are underground, everybody else is overground utilities. So, you figure I've been there for 44 years or so, I don't know, 1974, Mark, you can figure out the mathematics.
You can figure out too, George.
I have never seen markers where, we are at the end of Wolf Swamp Road across the street from the Twin Hills. My wife called me up in hysterics, guys are putting markers on our lawn. I said, I'll see you after work. I came back, I noticed them, I said, wow, okay. Uh, we never needed those markers for 44 years. You've gone through Tennessee, uh, what was the other one? El Paso owns the gas pipe. We all, I knew when I bought that house, there was an easement right-of-way on the property. My lawyer at the time said, you do realize there is a pipe there? Where I said, what do you mean a pipe there? A huge pipe that's a live gas pipe. And that it's positioned, the easement's positioned a little bit away from your house, you know, but it's big. Uh, I went looking for my, uh, the eas, uh, the easement on my deed, I don't have it.
Neither do I.
Yeah, I don't have it. Obviously, it's down at the registry of deeds. I would love to see, and I don't have the time because I am still working, even though I'm aging, uh, I'm still working, I'd love to go down and get a copy of easement because I believe that easement says exactly in the beginning what the, uh, what exactly Tennessee Gas, uh, had, like one live pipe. I know when they came in to, I thought they paid us to replace a pipe.
The second pipe.
Additional pipe, I have easements.
Right, you have it? So, there's two live pipes there.
Apparently.
Apparently. I was always under the impression there was only one. Then they came in again and they, and they wanted to buy, uh, they want to put a pipe in there for fiber optics, which, which I believe never went through, the fiber optics plan, which meant, talking, uh, listening to a lady from the federal government there, that if they ever sold rights to fiber optics all along their easement for Tennessee, they would make money, somebody would make money, and eventually you'd have to have a marker for that too, because it's underground.
But we were never told.
We were, I don't think that ever went through. So, that's all I know, you, you got the easement.
She has an easement.
I have easements for our property and they're pretty specific and they don't mention markers.
Well, I know, right, my point is after 44 years, all of a sudden went into the market business. We survived for 44 years. Did someone do something along their right-of-way, uh, that all of a sudden triggered off, ooh, we better get some markers, someone's digging illegally. I think we're educated enough, we're sophisticated enough to know, anytime we do any excavation, we call up Dig Safe and we make sure nothing's hit.
And, and like maybe four or five years ago was that? We would receive regular, instead of markers, we would receive, um, little messages, you know.
Notifications, which they've stopped and now they've replaced the markers.
So with markers, well, actually nothing for a while, and now markers. And we would receive notifications about remember, be careful, dig safe, all that stuff. That is what we was...
From Tennessee Gas.
From Tennessee Gas. And we received that maybe when we were first living there for a bit, and then it stopped and many years went by, and now this.
Okay, but everybody...
But so there was a different public safety is what I'm saying, message that was going out when we first moved here. And now it has shifted. That was more appropriate for being, all of these homes, single-family owned, this, I'm the owner, this is my property, this is not a rental, this is not, you know.
We know where the pipelines are because the grass is dead.
Yes.
And, and we, and also our driveways are cracked.
Yes.
Because the heated, I always thought there was one big gas pipe, cracks our driveway, you know, and, you know, for years I've been saying, well, it's the gas, their easement is causing the crack, they should come and repair it, but I haven't pursued the issue.
Our main thing is we feel that this is an excessive overkill for this particular situation of this road in this neighborhood, in this place, this is an excessive safety. And of course, we're behind safety, but there are other ways to do safety that have obviously been successful for 44 years, 21 years, 19 years, that we have all been living here without anything occurring.
I assume like Marie, Marie said, the helicopters have GPS, they know damn well where the, the pipeline is. Okay. So therefore, the issue is the site, the site, uh, the visual site of things. I assume the pipeline goes under Wolf Swamp Road Field?
Yes.
Well, wait a minute, where the, where's the line of sight there? Uh, there's excavation occurs on Wolf Swamp.
Much more on our property.
People go in, they, you know, they did the softball diamonds over, uh, you know, I just don't understand all of a sudden why they want to put those, and at one time, one of the owners of the gas pipes said to us, we could put certain plants...
Yes.
Around, uh, if we wanted to, uh, if that ever occurred, which it never did, obviously, you know, plants that don't have lo, long roots that go down, that might tangle up and now into two gas pipes, which I, I still question, two live gas pipes.
Yeah.
Uh, so there are, and if you look nationally, I think they also, certain gas pipe companies allow you to put plants, flowers, uh, the ones that grow every year die and they grow up there. But the way that somebody's, all I know is my wife is fuming, and I think Mark knows my wife, uh, she's fuming and she, she, she's already to say, hey, I'm out of here.
Yeah, we all feel we'd like to leave.
You know, and once there's an exodus of people...
Yeah.
You know what's gonna happen.
And we think that when we all exit, which we will be doing fairly shortly, and our property values will go down, that will impact the town of Long Meadow. Of course, it will destroy us, but it will impact you also.
Okay. Yeah, real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I just ask one question? Is that, over the years that you've lived there, have you ever done work in your yard with it's put in the driveway and or other things where, and, and I'm asking the question because I don't know the answers, um, where you've ever done work in your yard where you've had a, a knock on the door or a phone call from the pipeline saying, you know, be careful what you're doing because this is here?
No, we have had work done, we've had...
Tons in our back.
In our back and we've...
Called Dig Safe.
And they marked.
And every contractor we've had, and they mark our whole front, our whole front will be, get marked during the time we've had a lot of work done in the back with lots of little, you know, pipes. Because many workers will be coming and going and...
They all get marked and anybody I've ever worked with has known that they need to call Dig Safe.
The workers have known.
Call Dig Safe.
Right, I called us to have a tree removed. It wasn't near the pipeline, but in case it fell in that direction, we called Dig Safe and got instructions for the tree cutting.
And I believe we all have, there's been a lot of work on Wolf Swamp and everyone's called, everyone's called.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
I looked at the minutes... I looked at the minutes, and it's, I didn't see some of the additions. Alex, I don't think your addition was on the minutes list.
I didn't even get them, Richard. I didn't get any of the old minutes.
I had them on my, on my electronics.
Well, there was nothing in the package.
Not my package.
That folder for old package was.
I brought it up.
Old business was.
There's old business right there. There's nothing, at least I don't mind.
Yeah. Well, see, here's the minutes right there.
We'll see what you bring up for that.
You've got the May 4th minutes.
Yeah, that was out of the minutes. Well, let me go back.
But you don't have the March 18th or the April 6th?
There, I got March 18th, April 6th, and April 21st.
Not in my package.
I got, I got the electronic.
I got, I got the electronic. I never got.
I mean, that, okay.
Because I sent them all to Devon.
Yeah, it's out in my package, and it came out the same package. I can understand why you don't have it.
There's nothing under old business.
Okay.
Yeah, old business, mine is completely empty.
Okay. Well, for some, I looked at the one minutes, and they haven't been modified anyway. Alex, your comments aren't in there.
Right. And I think I emailed them to you on Saturday, maybe?
Yes, you did. I did. I have them. But I didn't have everyone's comments.
Right.
I can't explain why you don't have them, because I got them. We all get the same electronic file.
Right.
Because he didn't get them either.
Yeah, but I mean, I get the same electronic file everybody gets.
I got you.
Yeah.
Mike, you can play on your computer.
No, I don't understand it.
I got the original file. I'll go look at it.
Okay, well, apparently, we've got a mess up on the minutes. And Stephen, Stephen gone off to get some water? Okay, I'll get this taken care of, because these minutes have got to be brought in and approved by next meeting, period, along with the minutes from this meeting. We need to clear these minutes up. Okay? I'll get with Stephen. I don't know what's happened on electronic, but if they didn't get them, we're not going to process them tonight. Okay? But I got them. I have no idea why. Okay.
Can I just ask which ones you have?
Well, they don't have any of them.
No, which ones you have?
I got 318s, 46, 421, but I did notice the 421s did not have the additions that I put in or the additions that Alex put in. So I would, I will get with Stephen and get this fixed.
We'll do that next time.
Yeah, this, this will be done by next meeting. We're going to clear all these old minutes out. We got new business. Set the annual election ballot.
I moved to set the annual election ballot for Tuesday, June 9, 2015, based on the recommendation of the town clerk.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I think we have to sign that somewhere.
Yeah, I think the originals coming around. And we have the quarterly investment report. Mr. Bersturich was here. There he is.
He's hiding. Put a bright orange cone on him to make sure he knows where he is.
Hopefully, everyone has received a copy of the investment report. As of March 31st, we are fully in compliance with the investment policy. Couple areas of that compliance include that there were no long-term investments greater than five years. The individual bank balances were all under $5 million. All the investments were fully insured and are secured, and all the, the ratings of the banks were a green rating by the Vera Bank outfit that we use for bank rating purposes. Just by way of information, in January, we took out a 13-month CD with the Hampden Bank for 0.8 percent, and that was the OPEB money that was voted on at the previous town meeting in November, $254,000. We also increased the stabilization fund from a vote at the annual, at the fall town meeting of $969,000. One thing that we are witnessing is that we were getting a nice rate of return from Mount Washington Bank. That amount was reduced slightly from 1.13 percent to 1.02. Again, I think we're still doing very well at 1.02, so nobody's really complaining about that. I think a couple weeks ago, I was here, we had, we had done the bonding of $1.5 million. I don't think that's anything new to anybody. What is new, however, is that the buyout of Hampden Bank by Berkshire Bank has caused us to come out of compliance all of a sudden because we no longer have the DIF insurance on our investments at Hampden Bank. We had three CDs over at Hampden Bank that now Berkshire owns. I just want to get the amounts for you. One of them was a little over $1 million, one of them was $500,000, and another one was $255,000. The, the one for $1 million was actually callable at no penalty, so we actually did take that out of Hampden Bank just, just recently, within the last couple of days. We were able to secure Country Savings Bank an equal rate of 1 percent for 12 months, so we actually made that move already. So we still have two CDs that are due, they're relatively due next January of 2016. The penalties for removing those are $4,000 and $2,000 respectively. It is my suggestion, however, that we do not remove those out. We believe Berkshire Bank is a green rated bank. I don't think we're in, as much as we're a little bit out of compliance, I don't think we're in any jeopardy as far as losing our investment there. So unless otherwise directed at this point in time, we're going to leave that money at Hampden, at Hampden Bank. It just, it will not be secured at this point in time with DIF insurance. Or the first $250,000 will be secured.
Paul, well, there was some discussion, and I don't know if you were in early, I was talking to Peter Landon when he was interviewing for a position on one of the boards. And is there not an ability to get a, a separate letter from the bank that essentially pledges the additional, you know, insurance or something above the DIF limitation and?
We, you know, I haven't spoken to the treasurer specifically about that letter. Sometimes we, there's the collateralization, but it usually happens beforehand, because the bank will get that collateral, and it's usually taken off. You lose a couple basis points on the, on the rate of return that you get. So being after the fact, the collateralization is probably out of, out of the question at this point in time. But we can, we look to secure that, and I, I don't have an answer for you, Mark.
Yeah, I'm just saying, because the situation's kind of unique, that it's the result of a merger of banks as opposed, I mean, clearly, you would not have done this by first intent.
Right.
Because it's out of compliance with the, with our regulate, you know, our policies.
Right.
So I'm just wondering if we can't go to them and say, look, folks, you know, chalk it up to the cost of your merger, but we need something that, that makes the town whole on this thing. You know, again, I'm not suggesting we, you know, we do something irrational, but, but, you know, we would, I'd like to see us stay in compliance if we don't.
Yeah, sure. We can actually follow through and follow up on that, see what the answer is. I'm just not 100% sure if Cheryl has. I had not heard that she had done anything with, with a secure letter, anything like that, a letter of security to that nature. So.
Paul, is, out of compliance is the DIFM, not because Berkshire's a green, green rated?
Right. We're out of compliance because we are not fully secured and/or collateralized and things to that nature, right? That's, that's what we're out of. We'd be secure for the two.
But we're still at a quality bank. I just want everybody.
We're still at a quality bank. We're, you know, secured for the first $250,000, but again, we have close to, you know, $800,000 there almost. So we just want to bring that to your attention. Like I said, we will not be, we will pursue on the security letter, but it is not our recommendation to move that money out at this point in time, again, because of the stiff penalties involved. Again, unless otherwise directed.
I mean, it's a pretty low risk.
We think so.
Yeah.
Yes. We believe that to be the case. Again, Berkshire Bank, green rated. These are there, only there another seven months. And at that point in time, they're going to have to either come up with something. If they don't give us the letters of security, they're going to have to come with a collateral, or we're moving on.
Oh. I mean, we, as I understand it, we put the money into Hampden Bank when it was Hampden Bank.
Correct.
And sort of part of, part of that deal with them was that they did have that insurance. So it, it kind of seems like they're changing the contract after the fact. See what I'm getting at?
No, I.
I mean, like, part of the inducement to go with them was what they, what they had for insurance. And then they, the way, you know, you're describing, you know, they're holding us to our end of the bargain, and they're not holding up to their original end.
Correct. Again, we had, we had lost the security.
I mean, I guess that sort of, that might be part of the conversation, you know, with them, and saying, look, you know, we feel we're not getting our end of the bargain.
I also had a conversation, quite honestly, with them, and not through the, well, somewhat of the town funds, because I'm the treasurer of the Scantic Valley Group, and we have a lot more money with them.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I was not given much satisfaction with that. For me to withdraw funds out of Scantic Valley, I was running up penalties of $50,000. Again, it is one of those things that I will bring to the board of directors next month to see how they want to handle it. But, I mean, I suppose we could put a little more.
We also may have negotiated before we took the million out.
Well, we actually got the same rate of return on the million, so we were.
I get it, but.
So, but, but again, I mean, I think what they're going to see is they're going to see a large exodus of funds from the town of Long Meadow and or Scantic Valley, unless they.
You've got to believe there's others too, Paul.
Oh, no, you sure have to believe it. And maybe it's just not in, in the business niche that they want, which is, which is fine. And that's.
Other banks want our money.
I would imagine so.
Sure.
Well, I think this is great that we get these quarterly reports, and though we're not following the policy directly, having the policy in place means this is something we look at and we consider. But I agree, it's, it's not worth it losing the money. The risk doesn't equal the loss that we would be facing.
I mean, actually, part of the policy also stays to notify folks, you know, very quickly also. So, I mean, we are, to that degree, following the policy also, so.
Right, thank you.
And then select board has the option to, whether they want to, you know, bend a little bit in this particular case. So that's why I wanted to bring it to your attention. So I don't know if there's any other questions on the investment policy per se.
None?
Yeah, I think we've got the ban renewal coming up.
But the only question I have is, we're all in agreement that we don't want to liquidate the CDs. I just want to.
You want to take a vote?
Not necessarily vote, but I mean, we're in agreement, right?
Yeah. I think the recommended approach is fine.
Yeah, I just want to, so they're off the hook that we agree with, okay.
You should move on to ban removal, Paul.
The ban, sure. We have a ban that we took out back in, in November, $4.3 million. That is now due. We are looking to renew a portion of that ban, as we've paid down some of it. We would be renewing 3.184, $3,184,900. Some of the ban, we had, we had permanently bonded back in March, so we took out, we no longer have the bans on those projects, but we have a debt service now of five years on some of those water, water projects, and a little bit longer on the, on the drainage project there, that $758,000. We had a number of banks, we had five bids that came in. Two banks, both Eastern Bank and People's Bank had bid 0.50. They were the low bidders. And it was the recommendation to go with Eastern Bank. Eastern Bank holds the, the current ban, the $4.3 million one. That happened to be at five basis points less than what this one is. But I guess within the industry, and speaking with Clark Raul, our financial advisor, that the first bid that comes in usually gets the bid. So, and Eastern Bank actually does quite a bit of bidding with the town of Long Meadow too. So we're very, very happy to give it to Eastern Bank in this particular case. So I would recommend that the board approve this ban for funding. There is an itemization on the second page or the, in back of the cover of the projects that are covered there. And I will also say that money that was approved, some of the money that was approved that I had asked for back in November, there was some excess capacity, taxing capacity I'd asked for. That money has been, actually been used to reduce further some of the, the outstanding principle. As a quick example, the fiber optic cable, at the beginning of the fiscal year, there was $352,000. This is our second payment in this fiscal year alone of $88,000. So we've accelerated some of the payoffs on some of these with some of the excess funds that we had available in taxing capacity last November. So, anyway, again, I would recommend the board that they authorize us to go forward with this and approve the ban as mentioned to you folks, unless there's any other questions.
Chair, I move, we award the May 18, 2015, six-month bond anticipation note, $3,184,900 at a rate of 0.50 percent to Eastern Bank.
Second.
Any more discussion? See, no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Paul.
I do have the paperwork. I don't know if you guys want it now or.
Yeah.
Again, I'm going to throw you flowers. That's amazing, the acceleration and all this. You really keep an eye on things, and I'm very excited about that.
When, when we got our meeting going tonight, I, by mistake, slipped over select board comments.
We never went to select board comments. So, does anybody have select board comments?
You asked.
No, we had, we had resident comments and announcements. Yeah.
Actually, I, I have a couple.
Okay.
But do you want to do it now or finish the?
Well, we're getting ready to go into stormwater utility discussion.
The town managers.
And we got a town managers' report we got to kick in too.
Well, I guess the one thing I was going to say is, I was sick, and I apologize for missing town meeting, and I wasn't sure if I was going to make the end of this meeting.
You're doing good.
But so far, I'm still here.
Do you want to do town managers' report first?
Sure.
Town manager, fire up.
Okay, well, thank you. I'll be very brief. As you can see, we already talked about Dropbox. It was mentioned that the Quint could be here by the end of the week, which would be nice. I think if we put a, a marking on it, signifying Chief Madison's effort, he would probably be in the garage that night with a scraper. But it's a very nice thought and gesture, and I appreciate it. And also, we did have a kickoff meeting with our facility task force, the DPW facility task force. I think it went well. We went over kind of a mission statement, which I have here, and some, I'll call them ground rules, but basically some structure around how we want to conduct our business and, you know, go through and advance the project. The designers for the project, Weston and Sampson, did come to town meeting to interact with town meeting attendees and explain to them, you know, really, only if, you know, just at this phase of the project, why a new facility is needed, why it cannot go in its present location, and, you know, really remind the public of all the things that the DPW does for them. As was mentioned, 14,800 people did not get the benefit of that presentation, so that was a bit of a disappointment. Honestly, if I thought of it, hindsight being 2020, I would have had them come to Long Meadow Days instead. But the people who they said they did talk to were very positive about it and understood. And we do have an educational component. That's a big part of the task force's work, which is, you know, we're going to get those questions a lot about why not there, why do you need it, what's, what goes into a DPW facility, why do you need the space? And we really want to focus on answering those questions for the community. So when we hopefully move forward to ask them for funding, they understand that it's, you know, the importance of it.
Stephen, what you were just describing, this educational component?
Hmm? It's included in the fee for the Phase 1 of the work.
I mean, because what you're describing is sort of political, you know, it's almost as if we were paying Lancer Pride for the new high school advocacy.
I totally disagree. I totally disagree. And I don't even know how to respond to that other than to say, if you don't think people are going to have questions about, if you think people's questions about why do you need a new facility and why can't it go to its current location are political questions, then okay. But otherwise, that is a key part of this project that ultimately town meeting will have the final say on.
So, but this was, so you say it's part of the fee. So this was a term of the contract that they're required to do?
I, I don't think it was even a term of the contract. I think I just asked them if they'd be willing to do it, and they said yes. Public, and I should, public outreach is a part of the contract. They do a lot of public meetings as a part of the normal course of their business. In fact, that was when we had our interviews with them and the other firm, the references that we called spoke highly of their public presentation skills. So public presentations are a natural part of what they do. I don't know if, I didn't, this, this one town meeting presentation wasn't like a specific task or deliverable, but I asked them if they'd be willing to do it, and they were.
I'll repeat what I said to Arlene, a show on LC TV, a video, even if it's. I'll repeat what I said to Arlene, a show on LC TV, a video, even if it's just you and Arlene or someone going through a lot of that material and charts, I think would be very valuable for the community to understand and for all of us to understand.
Yeah, no, I-
The steps of the process.
We will, this is one of the things the Task Force will help with, is helping, help us craft that message in a way that resonates with them first and then their peers second, and then help us find medium or media through which to deliver that, that message.
Yeah. Stephen, I just have a series of questions about the reports that were included. I was wondering if I could just go through them and some were comments, but some maybe you can respond.
Lightning round?
Yeah, right, yeah, we'll do that. So, just a comment, the DPW report that we get every month, and there are several of them, I guess my comment is with Mike's retirement, maybe we can look to change this, the format. I, I guess my comment would be it's getting stale where we've got the same thing in there every month that's, and then no progress of the first paragraph and a half that you read that says how much money was approved and not much of an update or highlight the update, the update so that those of us who know the projects can skip to it, just a quick comment. Also, the, that, yeah, that's what I put down, just update the project scope. The other one is the, a couple of comments on DPW facilities. I guess I was very surprised that, or their DPW facilities report that we're just now putting out to bid the Community House Stage Project and I was surprised by that. I would have thought, because that was approved quite some time ago and I thought-
I think that's already, that must be a misprint. That's already, that's already been out to bid. In fact, it's, I think I, I should have put a picture in this month's report, there's-
Well, I was there the other day and you're right.
The proscenium was done, it looked spectacular. They did, they did some repairs up above the stage and painted it all. I think the last thing to be done is the flooring.
So, either we're out of date or something, something.
Yeah.
But also, just a curiosity, that in the Health Department, there was a report about a geothermal well that falls under the Health Department, somebody was installing. I mean, it's not a drinking well, it's a geotherm, the town, the state doesn't differentiate between a geothermal well and a well for drinking water?
She didn't discuss that with me, so I-
Okay, fine, I just thought that was interesting.
Can I just make a comment on the thing? I kind of agree with you and sometimes when I look at these reports, it does get a little stale, but I think my, an approach is to produce the reports as if no one's ever read a previous report. And so, because these are public documents and get posted on the website, if someone moves to town and wants to find out what's going on, they can read these reports for a comprehensive view, they don't have to go back, you know, to kind of play catch-up.
I absolutely agree, but if you can start one sentence that says, "Update since last report" and then some of us can jump to the-
You know, certainly a font change or a bullet that says, you know, in italics, like "new activity."
Yeah, something, something like that, okay.
Well, just going on that is actually, which tells you how funny it is, that's exactly what I complimented DPW reports on last time, was because I like to see all the projects that are out there and even if there's been no activity on it, I wanted, I want it still in the report. So, I had actually complimented him on that.
I, I, just comment that I kind of take it, I was concerned about, I was going to say take exception to it because I can do also, but I was very concerned about a report in, I think it was a DPW report, that Faloka has decided to go forward with the walking trail at the Adult Center. When, that was a vote by town meeting to appropriate money for a walking trail and I'm not on, you know, it wasn't Faloka's money, it was town money. And I guess I'm put off a little bit by the fact that Faloka has held up for now an entire season or a year, the start on that project, which is the way it, it came across, that we deferred the project because Faloka decided not to spend. Now Faloka said it's okay to go ahead with the project. If it, if I read it wrong, I apologize, but I thought I was interpreting it the way it was read and I apologize to Faloka if they didn't do that.
No, they did. There's a bit of a backstory.
Well, they don't have the right to hold up town money.
It's their project. It's not a town, Faloka applied through the CPA for the funds. DPW is providing, or the Town of Long Meadow was providing engineering and procuring support, but it was, the application was submitted, I think, by Diane Nato and Kathy Grady on behalf of Faloka, it was not a town project.
CPA project.
It was a CPA project applied for, when we just, we just had the discussion about how, you asked the question of private sector entities, this is an example of, of a non-municipal entity, Faloka's a 501(c)(3) applying for it. We try and get involved and apply as much support so the project gets done right because it is town money, as you said, so all procurement laws and everything apply, so we do facilitate and/or manage the project. When the Pioneer by Planning Commission completed their report and suggested that, you know, you could possibly expand the senior center out into where this walking trail would go or the COA preferred move the senior center altogether to Turner Park, which is one of the next questions we'll be addressing through the Citizens petition that was approved last week. It was my suggestion to the head of the Faloka Board that we hold off on doing this project because if the thing, if the senior center does end up moving to Turner Park, then you will have installed a walking trail that may not be utilized. In fact, at the same time, Mr. Weiss from the CPA contacted us and was kind of vaguely aware of things that were happening and CPA was actually going to request or, they were going to request or just say that they were going to suspend the funds pending the outcome of this feasibility study process. They didn't actually end up doing that and Faloka decided on their own that they wanted to proceed with the project. And like you say, it's CPA money, but it was applied for, you know, it was applied for by Faloka. And as much as I don't think it may be the best time to do it, given the possible uncertainty about the location of Senior Center, I also feel like if I had said, if I had stood in the way of Faloka doing that, I'd probably criticize for that too. I don't know, so I don't know if there's a right or wrong answer, other than they apply for the money, they get it from CPA, the CPA approves of what they're doing.
Okay, they clarified it for me, thank you.
Hey, can I, so, so in other words, so if the senior center is expanded, isn't it going to go over the area where the trail is?
We don't know, but that, I mean, expansion into that area could be an alternative.
I mean, but the, I think the drawing that we had showed that.
It's one option, I mean, that's, that's a concept.
But I guess, so, this almost seems like we lose either way. If it, if it goes to Turner Park, the point is, Mark, you know, it's not going to be used. So, if it goes to Turner Parker, it won't be destroyed, but then it won't be used. If, if it stays, if we stay at Greenwood, then it will be destroyed.
That's not for certain, though.
Okay, okay.
It's a possibility, but it's not for certain.
If that's our best defense, then it's not certain it will be destroyed.
But I think, but I think the point is, is that we don't have control over that.
Right. And we don't.
That's, that's the point. I mean, I could say, I suppose I could direct the procurement manager and the town engineer to not assist Faloka in doing the project, but I don't think that helps get a better project.
But they could go out and then hire the-
Yeah, they could go out and do their own thing and then, but it's still taxpayer money and I'm not really, I think that's a less desirable option.
Richard, I would suggest that some kind of conversation be had with Faloka, because the concern I have is that, I mean, this could really wind up as a really bad use of public money. And it could stain the whole idea of CPC, I mean, this could be something that people latch on to as, look, we gave this money to a private entity and look what happened to it. I mean, because the way I just described it, we lose either way, doesn't make any sense. I mean, the, the assumption that, the assumptions that were behind the allocation of that money are no longer present. I remember looking at this before and I remember kind of wondering about it and then, you know, it didn't even seem possible to me that we would, we would that quickly be in a situation where the walking trail would be destroyed. So, I mean, you know, if we just want to hold up our hands and say, let it go and if the money gets wasted, it gets wasted, seems like it's worth a conversation.
But we just spent tens of thousands of dollars on a kitchen renovation and hundreds of thousands of dollars on a roof there and the electrical system up, I mean, there's plenty of examples down in Greenwood Center where we may end up saying, what a terrible waste of public funds, so.
There are a lot of variables.
So, in other words, we should waste a little bit more?
No, I'm saying we shouldn't have wasted anything.
It's not for certain that it's going to be wasted. There are a lot of variables that could drive a renovated Greenwood Center as the future Adult Center. And PVPC was simply putting out an alternative. The possibility exists that a portion of, that in addition could be built out into that area and a part of the trail gets destroyed. Because that was a possibility, I did have the conversation with Faloka. And at the time, at the end of last year, they agreed. But now they've changed their mind and if the Board wants to call representatives from Faloka here and ask them directly, you're welcome to, but I, you know, it's not, I don't like just, I agree with you, I don't like just kind of throwing my hands up saying, all right, well, let's just, you know, throw the money at this thing and go with it, but, you know, we have learned about what is the Board's ability to disapprove of CPA projects recently. And, you know, like I said, there are, there are a variety of factors in play and looking at the bigger picture, I don't know which the better part of valor is. And so, like I said, Richard, I think if you want to have them come to a future meeting and explain their justification, that's fine, but, you know, it is, under how the system currently works, it's their project.
And do we know when it, when it's supposed to begin?
I don't know when the bid documents have already, but, you know, and I-
It was only a year ago.
Yeah, and I, it's a good project. I mean, it also includes a bocce court and benches and things that are truthfully portable. I mean, part of the, a substantial portion of the, I shouldn't say substantial, but a big component of the project are items that could be moved to a new location if needed. And, you know, the, the patrons of the, of the Adult Center who communicated with the Faloka Board said they really have a strong desire to use the exercise trail and I know the staff at the COA would like to have that as an alternative to add, you know, programming and, you know, like I said, it's, I don't say it's out of our hands entirely, but they do have, you know, the right to pursue the project that they applied for or were granted by the CPA. It would really be the CPA that would really put the marker down and say, no, we don't think this is right, but they thought about it and chose not to do it.
I'll, I'll check with Steve, I want to talk to Steve about it too, give some old background on.
Thanks. Just, Stephen, just a couple of more things that I just picked up. Just as a notice, the summaries we have for refuse and recycling summaries, water sewer usage, if, you know, the, the year-to-date numbers just need to be adjusted or corrected or put in there or whatever it is, they're not, it's a calculation error, just-
Oh, okay.
Just so we can get those. I go through every month and recalculate and be a lot easier if it was just there.
For what?
It was for both the water, water usage, sewer usage and refuse and recycling. There's a column that says year-to-date and that's not year-to-date, that's all. It's pretty straightforward, I think. I just had a comment about communications, there were a couple of things that showed up in the minutes that I was pleased to hear about, but kind of wish I had heard about them earlier. One was the notice of the Golden Kane Award Ceremony that was done, it would have, you know, I didn't know it was happening, didn't know it was happening in advance and apparently some people did because there were some people there. The other was a library volunteers appreciation dinner. I know we got a notification of the one that's at the Adult Center Volunteer Appreciation Dinner, didn't know about the one at the library. It would have been nice to hear about it, but I'm glad it, it, it took place. And also, on Sunday noon time, there was a memorial service at, at Long Meadow Days. I happened to find out about it because I was looking at the Long Meadow Days schedule, I'm not sure everybody heard about it.
What was it?
The memorial service at Long Meadow Days wasn't communicated outside of-
Isn't that an annual thing now?
Yeah, it's an annual event. It happens every year.
Generally, I thought we got a separate invitation. I don't, I mean, I was there, so.
I don't know. I don't know if we ever got one or not.
What? It was a memorial service at the, on the green at, at Long Meadow Days.
I didn't know.
Right.
It's just part, it's been part of the package. I don't know if we ever got a message before. To tell you the truth, I don't remember.
I told you, anyway.
I mean, I think this, I hear what you're saying, Mark. I mean, I received an invitation, like a printed invitation, to the library volunteer appreciation dinner. I don't, I think to some extent the library Board of Directors assisted in putting that on. So, I don't know that it's for me to forward, extend the invitation to other people when I received it. If it was kind of a heads up, let the Select Board know, I would certainly do that, but I received an individual, an invitation to me.
I wasn't looking to be invited, I was just looking to be, thought people should know what was going on and that's all.
And, and a lot of times, I don't know if, if the Board has received an invitation at their homes or not and, you know, because we don't-
That's fine.
So, I apologize for that, it was, you know, it was an invitation event and I truthfully assumed that you guys got one.
Yeah, anyway.
And I think the other two, it's, I think it's the new department people, like Amy did not know what to do about the Golden Kane and then she realized she should have invited the Select Board, so. And the same thing is the Vets Agent usually does invite the Select Board to the memorial service, so if you could give him a heads up. But Amy realized she had made a mistake afterwards.
That was my intent, that's all I was thinking, Marie, is just to, to understand. The, a couple of other quick things, there's the Park and Rec, Recs Department, Parks and Recreation Department, Barry made a comment about a convenience fee that they were looking at reviewing, which is essentially the credit card charges and how it's going to be handled. Is that going to be a department policy or is it going to be a town-wide policy? Does our, you know, is it a Parks and Rec Department decision? Is it a, you know, Town Treasurer or Finance Department decision? And I just think that discussion might be had at a different, not, it's not a Select Board decision necessarily, but, but I just think that when I saw it as a-
Isn't that a fees, don't we review a whole list of fees?
But, but that's different. Alex, for example, I know that if you pay your, your property taxes with credit cards, you pay plus whatever the fee, the credit card fee is. That's just because the town's not going to take a hit on-
Right.
On property taxes. So, the question was if you want to pay your, I don't know, soccer association fees.
No, I understand what it, exactly.
So, the question is, is it a department, and I don't know if it's not a, it might very well be a department-by-department decision, in this case, the Parks Department, or it may be a, a town-wide decision and I just want to mention it so that at least I can hear that there's a discussion.
Well, ActiveNet, not, the Parks and Recreation Department's the only department that uses ActiveNet. And ActiveNet does take a cut or assesses a surcharge on credit card transactions. Now, it is a convenience to be able to register your child online using a credit card, but we do pay and it's a pretty high number. Right now, one of the things we're doing, she's looking at the convenience fee, we are also looking at, is there a way to use Civics Plus, our new website, and do they have a module that can accomplish the same thing, perhaps, for perhaps a better fee? We've talked about it preliminarily internally, I don't know that we've made a decision on that yet, but-
Okay, as long as you're telling, credit cards are a way of life.
It would be a department, I mean, it would be a department-by-department because each, each transaction is unique.
Okay. And credit cards are a way of life, I mean, you're not going to say, no, we don't care.
We could adopt, I mean, the Board could adopt a policy to pass through credit card transaction fees to the customers as, and that would take care of it for every department, but I don't know if you want to do that because every transaction can be, you know, can be-
I wasn't looking to do that, I was just wanting to make sure that there was some, some review of that, I guess, and, and it's interesting because she also said, had comments very inner, about Civics Plus Activity Module and some of the statuses of what was going on and I was just wondering if there was an update since these are, you know, March data. There's some comment about the utility of the Civics Plus Activity Module to the Parks and Recs Department and since we're implementing Civics Plus, I'm just wondering if you had it, had it-
She talked to Civics Plus separately, as did the library as well. And right now, there's, they can have their website, right now they have separate websites, both Parks and Library do. We want, we want to integrate them into Civics Plus, but they can still use what they call widgets or modules that they have contracted with separately through Civics Plus, they can be integrated. Our directive was we want everybody in the same website, everything to look the same. If you have a widget that works for you that Civics Plus can't replicate better or cheaper, then we'll stick with what you got and we may just evaluate it over time. So, because the library and the Parks Department are separate and are looking and have a larger integration process, they've talked to them separately, but, and everything's still kind of rolling and we, we had a meeting, we were supposed to see, have a mid-project review last week, but the meeting got canceled because of schedule changes on both mine and the IT Director's end. But it is going well and we should be able to roll out a draft very soon.
July, July 7th was the-
It was, I think it'll be sooner than that, to be honest with you.
Sooner than that?
Sooner than that, yeah.
My last question was, do you have or when will we have a status of the pool openings? Since that wasn't commented about, but it had been in prior years an issue, so.
As soon as they warm up.
Yeah.
No, no, they're, they're very warm right now because there's very little water in the pools.
Yeah. No, I certainly won't do that in the Senate courts as well. No, I, I certainly won't do that in tennis courts as well. You know, I do, the comment was made about the, the fields, and, you know, I think we did get a lot of negative feedback about the condition of the fields, and I think when we talked about it internally, again, hindsight being what it was, we, we don't bring the long-term seasonal, seasonals on because we want to have them for a limited time and we want them through the fall because of largely leaf collection, which is probably the most labor-intensive thing that we do. We have a crew of about five, our grounds division is about five guys, and not all of them work on fields, and not all of them work on fields all the time. And I think as we, I think I've reported to the board, the priority is the school sports, and that's a policy that's been standing since before I got here, and the reason why is they have a, you know, the season is earlier and fixed, and greater logistics go into it than, than some of the other programs. That may not be the right way to approach it, it may be, I, I don't, you know, this is a tough year to judge that by. If we knew how long the weather was going to, the snow was going to remain on the ground and how wet the fields were going to remain, we probably would have said, let's bring on at least one long-term seasonal now to supplement the grounds division, the five guys in the grounds division, so we can get more work done on the fields in the, in the compressed timeline. So, if we normally have, you know, six weeks to get the fields ready for the high school sports seasons, this year was four or less, and so getting all, but the same amount of acreage and, you know, we had some sod work, we had to finish up from last fall and all these other things, and so we really, that was really a missed opportunity on our end, was not making the adjustment, bringing on a seasonal sooner. I know they tried absolutely as hard as they could, they did support the efforts of volunteers, and I know you can't have that time back, but it really wasn't for a lack of planning or attention or effort, it really was just too much, too many blade, too much grass and, you know, maintenance work in too short a period of time.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's something that we've been struggling with for years, it's a repeated concern, and I, I think that when we're looking that we want A-plus fields, we've got to pay for A-plus fields, and if that means that you feel we need to be putting more into, I, I don't even understand field maintenance, whether you need to be putting more product on it or we need to be starting earlier, we need more people working on it, but I think that's where we're sort of looking for you from leadership on what you recommend going forward, because I think it's, it's fairly clear that Long Meadow wants the A-plus fields, and what do we need to do to get that to happen? And maybe we have a new field guy, he'll be able to tell us what are the top towns and the Commonwealth around the country do to really get them. And we know there's always weather, but I think we're also underfunding the whole project.
Yeah, I mean-
It's, it's an easy thing to say, let's cut a little bit here and there, but the bottom line is, I just keep hearing this is what we want and so let's figure out how to get it done.
I can appreciate that sentiment, but when you have a fixed cap of what you can generate for revenue, it displaces something else.
That's true.
Additional funding on the grounds displaces, and we-
You have to let us know what that is when the budget season comes around again.
I've asked a great many people about this issue and they're, I do think this, this year was worse than any of the others in terms of the timing, getting the fields ready, and I do think more teams and clubs were displaced than normal. I do think normally, it's, you know, not perfect, but it's not, you know, it's, everyone knows the timeline and makes the adjustments. This year, because like I said, we lost at least two weeks of field prep time, it just, you know, with the seasons all starting, you know, the, the calendars for the clubs didn't slide along with the, the calendar of Mother Nature, and that was the real conflict. And, you know, like I said, I think if, I would have, we would have brought on more help earlier, but then, and then just tried to figure out, but, I mean, leaf collection would have suffered down in the fall, and maybe it would have been, you know, something different that we would have done, but, you know, I think that we should have probably brought on more help, you know, we're stressed then.
And that's what we'll have to look at, budget season, this coming year. Thank you.
I think I'd shared with Stephen, I, I've got a little bit of experience in spring startup for recreational activities, and there never was a year when I was right. I was either too much too early or too little, too late, and I, I used to get everything in line about July 4th, everything was perfect, and it's very unfortunate because you can't work the ground if it's covered with snow or if it's sopping wet, you're just, it's a no-win because of, because of the nature of a startup program, it's just like getting bowling under control, very difficult to get it under control. But once you get it under control, then it's fine, in the middle of summer, everything's on schedule. But, you know, you're right, you have a finite, finite amount of staff.
Yeah, and, and one of the things, we did get a lot of complaints with Greenwood Field, it had never really been maintained as a playing field, it was kind of a beer league softball practice field, and the club, you know, worked with the Parks and Rec Department to utilize it as a, as a playing field, as a, you know, as a ball field for competitive baseball. Well, it takes a while to get a field back into shape for that level of play, and I'll be honest with you, I think the level of expectation on behalf of the club was really not consistent with, with the timeline, with the existing conditions and the time that was needed to get it ready on top of everything else. And, like I said, we spent a lot of time talking about this internally, I pushed Parks and Rec and the DPW about timelines and schedules and things like that, but, like I said, it just comes down to the, the sports schedules were fixed and Mother's, Mother Nature's wasn't, and it wasn't an agreement.
I haven't talked to Stephen though, but I, my recommendation was you vastly increase your volunteer pool, because that, that is something that's static and you can pull it when you need it and you don't have to pull it when you don't need it, and that's, I think that's the only way you'll ever get away from that spring opening, and I would imagine, you'd be amazed, somebody, I mean, there was a lot of people, even rented equipment and worked on the one at Clint, at Greenwood.
Yeah, and, you know, Dave Horowitz, who was here interviewing, said that, you know, we want to really harness the awesome energy of the volunteers, but harness it nonetheless. You know, we had an incident where volunteers were snowblowing the tennis courts in April, March or April, and I just, yes, we are replacing them, but I can't imagine running snow blowers over tennis courts is really good for the courts, and they hadn't notified the town at all that they were going to be, we just had to drive by on a Saturday and there they were, you know, and so it's, you can, volunteers who are, you know, really yearning to get on the fields may be a little overzealous. If you work the fields too soon and they're muddy, you've created divots and everything else.
Let me add the operative, control volunteers.
Control, yeah.
Yes. Under your, under your direct control and supervision of the DPW. Okay, anything else, Dave?
I just have one other thing.
I mean, oh, you go, go ahead.
No, no, it's, but it's not a question for the Tommy answer.
Okay, anything else on your report, Steve?
I didn't-
Anybody other questions for us?
Yeah, I just want to, I want to make a comment because we're talking about fields and lack of funding, and I, I don't think that describes what happened this spring, because if you went over to the ball field, that Russell Field, the baseball field, and I think everything from there becomes a trickle-down, where that was a project that was abandoned last fall for whatever reason it was, it was not completed. And that field, they've, they've lost at least five home games on the Long Meadow High School varsity baseball program, and if you can't get that field in shape, then every other one is going to be pushed back, and it wasn't even, it wasn't even playable, not because the grass wasn't mowed, not because it wasn't muddy, because it was a project that was started and then just stopped. And I think this year, that's what went to the other fields not being, with the exception of Greenwood, because I don't know what the, I, I know the condition it was in, in the sense of it was an abandoned field, so to speak. But I think that is more of the issue, not the seasonal help, because I don't know what ha, I think the, the root of it was the project was abandoned in the fall for whatever reason. It was, it wasn't completed, sod was left rolled up on the field, it wasn't laid until this spring, and I think that goes back to the root cause, not money. I mean, I like the, and maybe it was money back in the fall, but I think if you find what that is, and I think the, the fields, we haven't had a complaint on, on field maintenance probably for the last five years, because I think there's been a lot of emphasis put in them, put into them. And we had Carl Quist, who, everybody that I talked to in youth sports said did a fantastic job, but, and that's anecdotal, but I haven't heard the, the same issues that I've heard this year, but I think it essentially becomes a trickle-down when, when the high school varsity baseball field isn't in playable condition, then there's no need to go take care of another field that, for Little League, for example, and I've coached Little League and we all knew the pecking order was as you grow up in age, those fields become better and better, more and more playable, I should say.
Can I just address the, briefly?
Sure, I'm just, I think-
Yeah, no, it's, it's, because we said for whatever reason was that they were rolling out sod in the snow in November, and so they, and this is one, another one we talked about internally, in terms of the schedule of, of the baseball field, that Tim Shannon, who's our new grounds superintendent, who I've heard, done a lot of positive feedback about, he's kind of come up through the ranks, knows his, knows his stuff really well, he, he and Barry Jarvis are in regular communication with the athletic director of the high school, and the schedule of what high school sport gets taken care of first is really guidance we get from the, from the athletic director, not a decision we make internally. And so, there were soccer fields and other things that, as Michael Capitasto described to me, displace, the baseball team would displace these seven other teams, and that was kind of how he used to prioritize it. Again, right or wrong, I don't know, but that's, the discussions were had, the plans were laid in February, it was still snowing and they were already laying out these plans. The sod project at Russell Field, even the athletic director admitted, maybe we shouldn't have started that one, but can you imagine the compressed timeline we had and trying to get that project done at the same time? And so, they wanted to get ahead of things, you can, leave sod there, it goes dormant, and then roll it out, and, you know, they did call 90% of the work, but the last 10% is all the fine cuts and shaping in, which takes not, you know, 50% of the time, and that's one where, do you wait till July to do that? Or do you get done what you can get done? And, and they made the decision to kind of go for it, so it would be ready for the spring, and, you know, I think it was, that one was a week or two behind where it should have been, or two weeks behind where it should have been, but I think the results now, if you go out there now, it looks great, and, you know, it's set up for the entire summer. So, you know, the, the criticism is fair, you know, it's, and I, I hope I don't, I'm not trying to sound too defensive, you know, I, I think there were circumstances within our control and circumstances beyond our control, mostly weather, that really led to the issues we had, but we're going to do the best we can learn from them.
Alex?
Yeah, I've said this before, I'll just say it again, the, the police report, you know, if we could have more information, you know, it talks about 11 arrests, we don't know what it's for, I, I don't, these other statistics, I don't think anybody reading it has any idea what, what's really going on there. You know, you compare that to the DPW report, which is many pages, it has words, and I would just ask that we get better information on the police department.
Is that a board directive? I mean, and I still, I mean, I don't know if the Republican prints the arrest logs, you know-
Long Meadow News.
Long Meadow News does, Joe Smith, you know-
See, I, I actually get better information from, from the newspaper.
I mean, do you want the, do you want the arrest logs in the monthly reports? Is that what you're saying?
I mean, I guess part of, part of my, you're asking me what I'm asking for, I don't, I've never seen this, so it's, it's, it's a little hard for me to assess exactly because I haven't seen it before, but, you know, a summary of what the arrests are for, you know, since, I see something called 1,208 calls for service, I have no idea what, what's going on there, I mean, that's a lot of calls for service, that sounds like there's a lot of things going on. What that consists of, no idea.
Okay, maybe as we go through our transition process, it's something we can talk to the next chief about.
Well, there's been a lot of comments made about the report, and I've shared with you too, I, it's kind of hard, there's too much information there for me, I don't need that much, and Mark really likes to get in, read, and I, I applaud you for how much you read. But I wish I knew what the happy medium was. Of course, I don't have to read it, so I guess you'd like it better off the air for the people that like to read it, because I, I hear more of the stuff going on, I, just by being around more, but I, I don't know what the right answer is.
You know, I feel like-
It'd be nice to get a condenser.
I feel like every six months, we have a, we have a conversation about formatting, and I feel like as soon as we settle on one, somebody wants to change it, and-
Yeah.
This is, this is the consistency issue that I spoke about.
Right.
And it's not really fair to put myself in the department head to spend a lot of time generating the work that goes in these reports, to just have the target flying all over the place in terms of how the information's supposed to be reported.
Yeah, well, I wish, I wish I could tell you too, but I don't know.
And honestly, I don't know, I, I don't have a, I don't have a visual, like, I visualize things, and I don't have a better visual of how to do this better. We are on the, the overload of information, as you just said, except I think it's fair enough to say that the police department, when you switch your whole load next to the other ones, and the fire department have less information. I ascribe that to somewhat the nature of public safety and how public safety things are reported anyway, but, again, I think that as we go through our discussions with the police department, or our analysis of the police department, this is an issue that we can focus on about how to report better what they're doing.
Well, I don't even think, I mean, collectively, if we got together, I'm not sure what document we would come up with, seriously, on the board.
But, I mean, this is, this is different, though, I mean, this, this is-
No, I mean, seriously, Alex, I mean, all of us together.
No, I guess what I'm saying, with respect to, I mean, this document has remained unchanged, though, so there's no inconsistency, and-
Well, what would you like, what would you like to see?
I think I just talked about it.
If I can give you an example, when you look at the police report-
Yeah.
This, this goes to the town manager, correct? And then, then you funnel it over to us. So, you have conversations with the police chief, for example, that when there's 1,208 calls for service, they might say, geez, you know, this month we had X number of calls that were serious crimes and 5% were, you know, non, a normal, you know, suspicious person or something like that. I think there should be, I, personally, when I look at that, I don't know what 1,208 calls represents, but, but I would imagine, for example, that the Long Meadow Police Department is furnishing the information to the Long Meadow News, because someone has to give it to them about the arrest record. So, to Alex's point, that you can look at the newspaper and discern more information from the, out of these 1,208 calls, what they would be. I think something that would be beneficial, because we don't have those calls, or the interaction with the police chief, for example, that you do, is how many of those were serious? I think that, that would be important, you know, what's the serious crime, is, are they, I would like to see information if there's a report from the chief that, you know, these are happening, you know, on a, between this point in time, we might need more overtime, for example, to address it from the midnight to four as opposed to midnight to eight shift or something, I think, and I don't need, I don't need details of who was arrested, because that's in the Long Meadow News, but I think 1,200 calls is, first of all, it's a lot, right, that's about 40 a day in a month.
Yeah, but that could be my cat's missing, the subway train walking on my street, I mean, it's a lot of those-
That would be interesting to know.
Right.
Right, so that 80, you know, at a 1,200 calls, 800 were, the cat stuck in the tree.
You know, I will say, when, when Alex first raised this point, it was all, it was narrative. The data that you have has been added since we first started talking about this. I could certainly go back and see what their software capacity is for reporting kind of by category, if they're, I mean, it's not going to be serious, not seri, you know, life-threatening, not like, I think there's probably different ways they categorize it, but that's certainly something we can look at.
I mean, you know, you could say, you know, wait, 11 arrests, you know, drunk driving, drugs, domestic violence, I mean, you know, it's-
And I think some of this is important, if we're going to start looking at the net effects of once a casino's in operation, that, and I know they have the data, but if we're going to be making financial decisions on that data, then some of that, I think is, you know, there's 92 medical emergencies and 21 assists to the fire department, I would say, I would assume that the 21 assists, I don't know what that would mean, is that, I'm, I'm assuming there are other medical emergencies that they responded to.
Right.
I think rather than monthly reports, maybe quarterly or yearly to let us know trends, if there is an increase, we've had an increase in drunk driving this year, or there's been, like we heard, there was the increase of break-ins that we had last summer, what percentage increase that is, so we could just see the trends. To know there were 11 arrests and three, really, just again, that's just numbers, it's data that's dumped on you, but if maybe on a quarterly or even even yearly basis, we could see where some of the trends were, then maybe we would know where we need to make changes in the budget to support added public safety in specific areas.
And, and, relative to last year's great number, I mean, you know, even, you know, water usage, I mean, that, that chart has five years' worth of water usage, and we can see how we run it versus prior, you know, again, if we, I, I think that's the kind of numbers that makes sense to me, is, and, and even in the Parks and Rec Department, you know, I'm, when Barry reports how many people showed up for daycare month by month, she always relative to last year, so you can see, at least there's the one-year trend up from now, and I think that's been very useful, especially since it's now gone up again after a year of going down. down.
Okay. Any more comments?
I, I just have one comment, and as we're going through these town, town reports, I think we need to, just as a select board, recognize the fact that we've got three retiring department heads, from the police, fire department, and DPW represent, I don't know, 75 years' worth of service to the town, probably?
I think 80.
80 years' worth of service to the town, and I think that's, yeah. So I, I think it's worth noting at the select board that these people all serve the town really well. Bob Ciano is a patrol officer, moving up through the ranks, the captain, same with Captain Madison from the police, the fire department. So I, I just like, I'm sure everybody else shares my, wishing them well and thanking them for their service.
I, I should have done this in the announcements.
Yeah, that's right.
Now that nobody's watching. Friday, there'll be an open house. I think you guys did get word from the fire department that there'll be an open house at the fire station. I think each department is going to do kind of a open house type thing for, for each of their department heads. They may not. But we are going, we're going to be sending out very shortly a save the date for a larger function, kind of an open to the public function, an evening function, for all three. None of those, you know, none of them wanted an event just for them. And so the only way to get them to show up so we could honor their service was to have it for all three of them. And we're just nailing down the final details on that. I can tell you the date will be Thursday, July 30th, at Twin Hills. But we're gonna, there are some details we need to send out, but that'll be going out, I would say, within the week.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
Is that two words?
Two words, yeah.
Okay. I don't think we're going to get much further tonight, but we, we can get back and at least go through the select board comments. We never get to, through that. So, any select board comments?
Richard?
Yes.
Let me just, are we going to go back to the agenda, or are we just gonna, because I could just make a comment on the stormwater utility and put it, put it to rest for tonight. Marie submitted a PowerPoint. I didn't see that until it went in the packet. But I put in some documents that you'll see. One is in, I think I mentioned, the city of Lancaster, where I was the administrator before I came here, had a stormwater utility. I think it was an effective tool, not a lucrative tool, but an effective one in, you know, kind of setting aside and monitoring, you know, stormwater costs. The ordinance, or what they would call bylaw, that established these stormwater utilities in the packet, there's kind of a brief summary that was given to the city council when it was approved. There's a sample of how a capital project showing the different lines of funding, including stormwater utility, would be allocated. And so there's some other background information in there. I do think it's something that we should continue the dialogue on. I do think it could have benefited the town of Long Meadow, especially if we link it to the new stormwater regulations, this MS4 that's coming out from the EPA. So, I just wanted to, I didn't really put a memo in there, because I thought we were going to have a discussion about it.
We plan on just putting this on the next agenda.
That's fine.
Yeah, just let, go right to the next.
But just so people go through the packets, that, that's what that information is, is sampled.
By that time, I guess you've got a presentation. You said Marie had sent something in?
No, I was just, that was informational.
Oh, okay.
I know it was on there, and I, I had, I just saw that, and I said, let me throw something, so people at least know what, what it is.
Well, just, we'll just roll it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question? Stephen, is, is this within a tax rate, this is, this is a fee, not a tax?
Correct. It's like a water sewer utility fee.
Okay.
Can I just have one thing on the complete streets?
Sure.
Just one minute, because we're not really going to discuss it tonight. But I did throw the information on a construe policy that Alex and I are considering. And it's sort of like your input on what you like or don't like about it, because I hate to have us spend so much time writing something up and then have you say you really don't like this section of it. So if everyone could spend some time looking at it and giving us likes, dislikes, warm, cold.
Maria, I gotta tell you, I, I haven't yet understood what complete streets is about. And I think I'd rather, before I go back and give you input on the policy, I'd like to just have a longer discussion about what that means, because, you know, and tonight's obviously not a night.
Yeah, I was going to say, I'd be glad to call you up.
But I have no clue what complete streets-
Steve, are we going to buy PVPC here to make a presentation to the board?
They could do that, yeah. It's, but I'd be glad to talk to you a little bit offline, too, to give you some background. And all I know is that when I went to Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, they, our tip projects are flagged, because they really are pushing the complete streets. They're pushing that all across the country and locally. So I will-
That's fine. I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent. I just don't understand what's meant by complete streets, because there's a lot of stuff in it.
That's it.
It is. It's a big program. Okay.
And select board comments?
Yeah, any select board comments? Alex?
You know, when I read the Long Meadow, no, the reminder, I found out about a letter that Stephen had sent to the superintendent about redistricting in the crossing guard program. And, you know, it's sort of, sort of an extension of the disappointment I've had with the process, mainly from the school department, of how the redistricting has gone. I don't need to rehash that here. But apparently, the letter, which, which Stephen shared with everybody at my request, you know, indicated that their options and how they deal with redistricting, you know, may be constrained by the budget that we had on the crossing guards. So, I wish we had known that, you know, because I'm concerned that we have a judgment being made that people can't, kids can't cross at Converse and Long Meadow Street. So a kid that's, let's say, lives on Long Meadow Street, who's on the east side of the street, is going to go all the way up to Laurel, come all the way back, which is probably 2/3 of a mile. I mean, there's a good chance people aren't going to do that. And I guess my, my comment is, I wish this had, this should have been part of the board discussion. And part of that is constrained by how the school department handled redistricting. But I hate, I just hate it that, you know, we've, we've boxed ourselves in with these crossing guards and how we funded the program. I mean, you know, whatever flexibility that we don't have now could have been, you know, easily remedied. I mean, these crossing guards do not cost a lot of money. So, to me, it's just sort of like another sort of disappointment on how this whole process has been handled as a town.
Okay. Did anybody get that read from the letter? Because I, I specifically said that the budget was a factor in how we, in the decisions we're going to be making regarding crossing. I don't think I said anywhere that we weren't going to be able to add cross, crossing guards, or do any, any, I didn't say, I didn't say any particular action was included or excluded at this point. I said we were evaluating all factors, including the budget. Did anybody else get the read, that I said we couldn't add more crossing guards because of the budget?
Well, no, you said, quote, "The crossing guard program is constricted by budget pressures." So, and having gone-
That's in the newspaper story.
Right. And having gone-
But you had the letter now.
Yeah. And having gone through this whole crossing guard issue last year, and how we had places unmanned, and, and we keep hearing that there wasn't enough money.
But is it in the letter, Alex? Was it, or is it the newsprint that put it out?
But I think in the context of the letter, I lay out that there are a variety of factors to consideration. I mean, the bottom line of the letter was, there are a lot of things that go into the redistricting process, as I think we've all learned.
Well, no, it's in, it's in the le, I don't know why you're, it says, however, the crossing guard program is constrained by budget pressures. It's the same language I just said.
Right.
So, yeah.
Okay.
So.
So amongst, so basically, the schools need to figure out what's right for the students of the district, and then we will work with them to plan the best and safest, you know, pathous ways for school, to get them to school. That's what, that's what that letter says.
Okay. So you're not, are you, or are you not constrained by budget? The crossing guard program is or is not constrained by budget pressures?
Well, we couldn't, we couldn't go out and hire 10 more crossing guards. But, so, you know, it's, there's not an unlimited amount of money we can throw at to hire additional crossing guards. That's why we can't just say, there are five new intersections we should cover, so we're going to add five new crossing guards. We don't have the funds to do that. All it says is, money is an issue when we plan, so we need to be as efficient as possible, I think, as I said in the next line. Yeah, that's what that says.
I don't see where there's a problem yet. There's concerns, but let's see what the final result is. I think the question, and I'd say my disappointment, is that the whole concept of transportation to schools wasn't talked about in the beginning. It's now being so, suddenly, now we're sitting and talking about it. But I don't, I think that was part of the process. It wasn't, the town should have been included, and safety officers should have been included from the very beginning in discussion. And, but right now, we will do what we need to do to provide safety, walking and riding to school. So I don't see where we have, right now, that kids are not being, that the town's not saying they're not going to provide crossing guards. If that is going to happen, then you will report to us when the final plans together. When we don't have a plan.
We spoke to the superintendent a few months ago. So I won't say we weren't included. We weren't included actively, ongoing, like with their task force. We met with them, and we basically said, you know, come up with a plan that you think works best for the students, and we will work around you, and we will plan, you know, we will provide for the safety of the, of the children and the motorists. And that was, that is our commitment.
See, but, see, one of the things that parents were led to believe was that the police chief had endorsed that plan from a public safety standpoint. That was said at a public forum, it was said at a meeting. So it had the seal, and that was a powerful argument for the particular redistricting option that they chose. And so it's a little bit of a, you know, a surprise, not just for me, but for other parents, to find out, oh, by the way, the thing that we approved actually might not have that same seal of approval, from a public safety standpoint. So that's what we're dealing with right now.
It's 11 o'clock.
Richard, I have a comment before the lights go out.
You better make it quick, because the lights are going to go off.
I just actually have to speak up for you, because I was very disappointed with the article that Alex Grant wrote in the paper, where you were personally attacked. And the line was that he was instructed not to respond by the select board chair. And I'm waiting, and the community's waiting for the answer. And I was at that same meeting. And at that meeting, the question was asked numerous times, Mr. Grant was not happy with the answer, and after a repetitive questioning, you said, why don't you continue this discussion offline and get back to us? So, my understanding is that Alex did not follow up on it, he's not brought it back, he's not given us more information. Instead, he just turned around and attacked you in the paper. Being the chair is not easy, and trying to get topics flowed and through, before the lights go out, is not easy. And I do not believe that you were rude in any way. I think you tried to keep the movie, and you gave a lot of time to this. Where when you talk about pertinent questions, I say the pertinent question is not, why don't we have Narcan? But what is the serious problem that we're losing our young people? Is it opium? What is it? And then when we identify the problem, then we ask the intelligent questions. So this, I think, is running down a rabbit hole. I don't know if Narcan is what really is needed to solve the problem. I don't know what the number one problem is. But to say, because we have not focused on addressing the questions the way one member of this board is, that the chair was inappropriate and answers are waiting, I, I just think we could go back and forth and attack each other in the paper, and it's not the place that it should be done. So that was my comment and disappointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Actually, I'd like to respond to that briefly. All I did was make the factual statement that the select board chair did instruct the people not to respond. And in fact, in Richard's version of the minutes, he acknowledges that.
No, I don't. No, you're, you're being ridiculous. I viewed the tape, Alex. The tape says exactly what was said. I said, I said basically what Marie said. I haven't discussed, I haven't discussed the issue with you, because I didn't fail, it's appropriate. But your article was false. You took my words and you stopped. You did not add the rest of the statement. I clearly stated, Stephen and you follow up and give with the division chiefs. You failed to put that in. And I'm sorry, if that's the way you feel about it, you can print the articles if you want, but at least, at least be truthful.
I was. You told them not to-
Put the whole thing, yeah, and then you stopped. But what else did I say after that? Put it in print. If you're going to print something, print the whole story. Most of the journals accepted the second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, ladies and gentlemen. We'll see you on June 1st.